We're recording, so it's.
Okay, good evening. This is the regular meeting, March 30th, 2021 of the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Um, Lynn, maybe if you can explain to everyone, we're running the format of the meeting a bit differently this month. So maybe you can explain how the format is being run for people who are listening to the meeting.
Sure. We are using the Zoom webinar mode, so the only people on the screen are actually the commissioners. And anyone who is an applicant will eventually be elevated, but everyone else is watching it in an attendee mode, so they can see everything that's going on, but there, um, there are not 150 little boxes on the screen bouncing around. So if you want to speak, um, when it's, when the public hearings are open for each respective item, you should use the hand, the raise the hand sign at the bottom of your screen. It's yellow and it'll put a little, um, raise your hand icon next to your name and we can see it. And we'll be able to call on you. It'll make it a little bit easier and more manageable. If, if that doesn't work, you can send a, um, a comment in the chat window. It'll go to me.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Um, this month, uh, 1299 Ponus Ridge Road, AKA 1303 Ponus Ridge Road. That application has been withdrawn and will not be heard. And 49 North Wilton Road has also been withdrawn and will not be heard. So let's start with a roll call. John Goodwin, I am here. Gene Grzlecki. John Cris.
Cousin.
Krista Nielsen.
President.
Dan Radman.
President.
Clarita Scornia.
President.
Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Present.
Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
James Pash.
Here.
Okay, great. Um, we have a full complement of regular meetings, so we will not be seating alternates this month. Before we proceed, um, I'd just like to note, um, Dave Scannell passed away about a week or so ago. And there's a wonderful obituary on him in, in the various town publications. One thing that I wanted to mention was Dave was a Planning and Zoning Commissioner from 1986 to 2014. So 28 years he was, uh, and when we overlapped, I started in oh seven. He was a very, very active member. He was always ready to roll up his sleeves. For those of you commissioners who complained about the special, special permit criteria, that's, that's a Dave and I who worked on that project to revise that criteria. David, Dave was never afraid to formulate and express a view. And that we, on the behalf of the commission, I extend my condolences to his wife Sue and his family. And Dave, rest in peace. We're going to start in regular meeting mode. And item number one legislative update and discussion. And I thought it would be helpful. Um, we had a discussion a couple of months ago. Many of us have been following, um, some of the legislative developments. As you know, there's a number of bills related to affordable housing. The argument has been that historical and current zoning regulations have and continue to propagate exclusionary zoning in the state of Connecticut. Meaning they keep, the argument is they keep housing costs high and they exclude lower income families from more affluent communities. One of the key bills is Bill 1024. Some of the key provisions of that bill is 50% of a downtown area or 50% of an area within a half mile from a transit station. I E. The New Canaan train station in our case would be subject to four or more unit housing as of right. Meaning that if somebody came in, wanted to build a four unit project, there's little that the Planning and Zoning Commission could do in terms of controlling that development. In addition, there would be no parking requirements for that development. So the bottom line is we would be limited in terms of our local control. There's also another bill that would tax, uh, town residents if they did not, if they did not achieve 10% affordable housing limits in towns. As we've been talking about, that is an extremely high bar to achieve. The commission, and I think commissioners will agree with me, is we believe there is a need to increase affordable housing. In fact, we just spent an hour talking about it, starting out a six o'clock meeting. And increase in portable housing is defined by the state of Connecticut. Where also they'll believe there's also an additionally a need for additional workforce housing and senior housing. And this is something that we as a commission have been working on. And frankly, is, is a, the fact that we've been working away on this, um, is something that the 1024 proponents have largely ignored. What I wanted to do is just briefly, I submitted testimony on 1024. And I wanted to read that to give a better flavor of the position that I took, uh, on behalf of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission. So I wrote, my name's John Goodwin. I chair the Planning and Zoning Commission of New Canaan. You have received very detailed and well thought out testimony from some of my chair colleagues of planning and zoning commissions in Fairfield County, as well as from the Western Connecticut Council of Governors, Westco. Having reviewed the Westco's submission in detail, I support their analysis and conclusions. Rather than repeat the testimony, I would like to offer some observations. First, I am concerned about the quality and some of the torturous reasoning behind the input that you are, that you have received. That appears to be driving the construction of the proposed legislation. I am an analyst by training, so for the past few months, I've taken the time to listen to, read, and study the arguments behind the premise of much of the proposed legislation, which is local application of planning and zoning regulations is exclusionary and restricts the supply of affordable housing. I find the arguments questionable and often based upon incorrect data and/or flawed reasoning. I actually have a fairly long list of items that I've come up with. Going on, I, I said, for example, the argument that a few examples of exclusionary use of zoning regulations years ago, 1937 was the one that I saw, makes all zoning by definition exclusionary is nonsensical. I see that special permits are bad, yet in 16 years of planning and zoning service, we have approved over 95% of such applications. We're using applications not to restrict affordable housing or other types of housing. We're simply using them to try to control what is put into our town. Character is an evil term, yet we have never used character from an anti-affordable housing perspective. I see that parking is not needed, yet in New Canaan, we are on a spur with mediocre train service. You need a car in New Canaan. Finally, I am concerned these sources of input have I priority decided their goals and have not made an effort to understand the facts on the ground of what smaller towns have done to promote affordable and diverse housing. So what is New Canaan as an example done and what are we aiming to do? I highlight, New Canaan has an affordable housing fund for 14 years funded by building permits, which supports a progressive and active housing authority. We are currently working on a fourth recent affordable housing project, which will enable us to achieve our second moratorium for 830G purposes. New Canaan is one of the few towns in the state of Connecticut that has this. We already have multiple zones for multifamily and smaller footprint housing, including a multifamily zone, an apartment zone, and specific affordable housing zones. Local zoning commissions have been criticized as not having expertise. One of the arguments is that we on our local commissions don't know what we're doing. New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission includes two architects with one of them New York City based, two former planners from large cities, specifically Charlotte, New Orleans, and the lead lender for one of the largest affordable lending banks in Connecticut. I would argue, we have more expertise on this commission than some of the groups that I've listened to on the other side. We are working on, hence me talking about our six o'clock meeting, and we've been working on this for months now. In addition to our affordable housing fund, by the way, we are working on and will deliver new regulations that will include greater inclusionary zoning for affordable workforce and senior living purposes. All of this has been achieved through the rigorous application of the Connecticut statutes concerning zoning, while tailoring the solutions to the reality of the local community. I think it's just important to be out there. I don't know commissioners, if any of you have anything to add, Phil Fred.
Sir Chairman, I would compliment you on your, uh, testimony, uh, to our state legislature. I thought it was very well stated and, uh, very, I hope very helpful to them to understand what's happening on the ground. I, I also think that the, um, one remark that the, um, uh, Zoom call that occurred last week with you, our own Scott Hobbs, who is, uh, in, uh, chairman of our Affordable Housing Commission, as well as Tom O'Day, who represents much of New Canaan was, and others who attended that. It was a very well attended call, I thought, and I thought, uh, that was really quite helpful in getting information to the public and to, uh, hear some of their views and to exchange those views. So I thought that was a time well spent.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Anybody else?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll second what John said. Uh, I, I did hear the same panel discussion. And I think, John, I think you represented, uh, New Canaan admirably, along with Kevin Moynihan, and, uh, made it pretty clear that to have a state statute that's basically a one size fits all, doesn't fit. And New Canaan is, is not the evil town that perhaps some of the people on the other side think it is.
Thank you, Dick. Anybody else?
I think that, I think, uh, Commissioner Ward's comments about one size fits all are, are very appropriate. If I learned one thing from being a former member of the Zoning Board of Appeals and now a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that one size rarely fits all. Each location is special as far as, um, where it's located, how large it is, shape and position of the lot, height, hills, ledges, and all the rest. And these are issues that I think this commission spends an enormous amount of time on, uh, in order to try to get it right. Because, uh, we want to get it right the first time. And, uh, I think it's important for the debt we owe to the citizens of New Canaan that we do that. And, um, we try to be very specific on each and every application.
Thank you, John. Okay, great. Let's continue on. Thank you very much, everyone. Item number two, 13 South Avenue upon application, and this is continuing in a regular meeting, by the way. Upon act, back, upon application of Milo Sacy of MLC Development LLC, authorized agent for South Avenue Property LLC owners for a site plan approval of sections four, two, C10 to allow the second floor of 13 South Avenue to be a residential use, one bedroom, one and a half bath, 745 square feet. The first floor will remain as current, as currently retail use for property located in the retail A-zone. Lynn, is Mr. CC presenting?
He is. I just elevated him to panelist.
Okay.
Milo, can you want to meet your?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
You can hear you.
Great. Thank you for having me. Um, yeah, so application, um, hoping to get approved. Currently, it's a two-floor retail. As hopefully you guys are aware, it's extremely difficult to, uh, to, to rent, uh, retail spaces right now, especially of this size. We're hoping to convert the second floor to, um, a one bed, one and a half bath. So that it's easier to rent for the owner, as well as hopefully bring another, um, individual or young family, um, downtown to, uh, to, to, to use and explore the town.
Okay, questions for the applicant? Everybody comfortable?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're gone. I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. CC.
Thank you, guys. I really appreciate this.
You're welcome. This, this application's closed. Do I have a motion for approval or denial of the application?
Well, I'll, I'll move for approval of the application. I, I think that it's consistent with our efforts to expand residential opportunities in different parts of the town. It's consistent with what we've been doing, uh, over the past years. And I, I see that this is a benefit.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Jane seconded. Any further dis- uh, discussion of the motion?
This would seem to be, this, Commissioner Chris, this would seem to be, uh, the, the type of, uh, housing unit that would be classified, uh, as workforce housing and would provide some, uh, diversity of housing within the, uh, within the town.
I think that's a great point. Anybody else? Okay, I call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Gene Grzlecki.
Yes.
John Cris.
Yes.
Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
Clarita Scornia.
Yes.
Ken Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Phil Williams.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll now go into public hearing mode. Continued 487 West Road, upon application, Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering, authorized agent for Ashley Shackleton, owners for a special permit of section 64G1, 64G2, to allow soil disturbance of approximately 27,000 square feet for the purpose of constructing a pool patio, pool pavilion, tennis court retaining walls, and associated stormwater detention systems in sight regarding regrading for property located in the four acre zone at 487 West Road. Mr. Frangione, are you here?
Give me a second. I just have to find him in the, uh, attendee list. He was here a minute ago.
Commissioners, you'll remember that this, uh, we did not close the hearing because we needed, uh, because an administrative wetlands permit.
Rob, can you raise your hand so I can find you?
Another reason to get back to Town Hall gang.
That's for sure.
Sorry. Thanks for your patience, Rob. He should be joining us right now.
Okay, wasn't me this time. Frangione Engineering, um, representing the Shackletons. As you mentioned, it was only held open to get the, uh, input from wetlands. We've received our wetland permit. So there's really nothing else for me to add.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Frangione? Okay, um, Lynn, I guess we have to open this up to the public. Anticipate anything, but can you take a quick scan, please?
Sure. Uh, if anyone wants to speak on this item, could they raise their hand? Do not see any hands raised for this.
And we did not expect such. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frangione. This application's closed.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. Item 449 North Wilton Road, that, um, was withdrawn. So item number five, 394 Main Street, upon application, Tiger Mann, after Public Works Authorization for town in New Canaan for special permit approval of sections 52C2 to allow the construction of the proposed new scale house building in the open space zone at 394 Main Street. Mr. Mann.
Hold on, I gotta promote him as well.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me. Um, as you mentioned, uh, the DPW is respectfully requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission grants a special permit under section 52C2, uh, for a new scale house at the town's transfer station. The special permits can allow us to replace an existing scale house, very undersized scale house, with a larger scale house size to accommodate ADA accessibility, restrooms, and added office space for our transfer station staff. Currently, uh, my staff is split. My supervisor, actually, his offices are down in the wastewater treatment facility down at the bottom of the hill. So his staff is, uh, at the top of the hill and he's at the bottom of the hill. It makes it quite difficult to, uh, manage the staff and then any problems that we might have coming going forward. Also, there's no restrooms, uh, at the facility. The, the restrooms for the, for the staff are in the old incinerator building, uh, when it's available. And if not, they have to walk down the hill or drive down the hill to use the restroom. There are no restroom facilities for, um, users of the transfer station at present. The new scale house would allow that. So the existing scale house is a prefabricated facility. It's 160 square feet. Uh, we're going to look to replace that with a larger one of 800 square feet. Again, it'll house this transfer station scale house operator, an office for the superintendent, a break room, bathrooms for public and for our staff, as well as a, uh, thank you, Lynn, as well as, um, as well as, um, uh, an area for them to change into, into their clothing and showers. Excuse me, the, uh, so as I mentioned, the current, current scale house is not, uh, adequate or does not provide sufficient space. And the new one, uh, should or will, uh, we're not proposing any different location. It'll, it'll sit in the exact same location it is, only on a larger footprint. It'll be surrounded by a concrete walk, uh, in an ADA accessible, um, sidewalk to, uh, an improved parking facility behind with, uh, ADA accessible parking. It's less than 100 square feet of additional impervious area. And, uh, it'll remain a one-story structure with an overall height just under 15 feet. I can go through each one of the special permit criteria all, all, all of them, if you'd like to, or, or, um, I know you're pressed for time and I know you have bigger items to go forward.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we can go to, uh, questions from the commissioners. Questions for Mr. Mann?
Question, John Cris. Uh, the toilet, um, is that, that will be, uh, hooked up to the sewer system in town?
Yes. Yes, it will. We have, we have, uh, there's a, there's a line that runs through at present. We'll be able to hook up, um, through the existing, um, incinerator building or outside the existing, existing incinerator building down through the highway department and to the wastewater treatment plant, which is on site.
Would there be any landscaping additions or subtractions as this, uh, building is put in?
There'll be a little, uh, well, there's a little bit of a grass area removed, uh, inside that, uh, inside the island itself. But we'll be looking to try to beautify it with additional landscaping and try to make it a little nicer. Add a stone wall, things of that nature, and a little, maybe a seating area for the gentleman outside.
Uh, when time comes to, uh, put in landscaping, you may want to think about native plants and the various folks in town you can talk to on that.
We were, we were planning to reach out to the Beautification League to help us, so thank you.
Also, the toilet, will that be handicap accessible?
We will have an ADA, yes, yeah, both for the, our staff and for visitors or users of the station.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Anybody else? Okay, it looks like, uh, it looks like we're good. Uh, Lynn, uh, would, would anyone from the public like to address his application?
Anyone want to speak? If you want to speak, could you raise your hand, please? Oh, wait, hold on. We got someone with a hand up. Wait. Okay. Todd, you can speak.
Hi, how's everyone doing? My name is Todd Gilbert. I'm a, I'm a resident in town since 2002. Uh, I've spent a lot of time up at the library. Um, I work there usually before COVID, one or two days a week. And I just wanted to speak to what the library has meant to me.
Excuse me, sir? Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
We are not, this is not the library application.
Oof, sorry.
No worries.
Am I in the wrong webinar or?
No, you're in the right place. We're just, we need a little more time. Lynn, can we?
Yeah. Yeah. And I don't see anyone else's hand.
Okay, great.
Does anyone here want to speak on 394 Main Street? If you do, could you raise your hand? Negative. There are no.
Okay, great. This application's closed. Um, item number six, uh, thank you, Mr. Mann. Item number six, 1299 Ponus Ridge, AKA 1303 Ponus Ridge, that was withdrawn. So we will now move on to the main event, New Canaan Library. Item number seven, eight, nine, item number seven, discussion and consideration of the request of Edward O'Hamlin, Robinson and Cole, authorized agent for the New Canaan Library, owners along with, with its affiliates of properties located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 444856 South Avenue. Amend the zoning regulations dated June 16, 2007, revised August 16, 2019, to add section 5.10, quasi-public library overlay zone and proposed amendments to section 22 of the New Canaan zoning regulations. Item number eight, these three will be heard together. Item number eight, upon application, Edward O'Hamlin, Robinson and Cole, authorized agent for the New Canaan Library, owners along with its affiliates of properties located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 444856 South Avenue for site plan approval percent pursuant to 82A. And new section 510G7, a proposed quasi-public library overlay zone and a special permit pursuant to 82B44D354C4464G66D and proposed sections 510C, D510G3B510G7 and 8 of the proposed quasi-public overlay zone regulations to allow removal of an existing 35,688 foot plus gross square foot library building and onsite parking and construct new 42,641 plus or minus gross square feet new library building, a new 21,700 square foot library, green private park open to the public and associated site infrastructure and landscape improvements. All patron and employee parking will be offsite and existing parking facilities located within 500 feet of the new buildings. See schedules A, B, and C, the proposed plans and studies submitted in support of this application for properties in the business A and apartment zone and proposed quasi-public library overlay zone at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 44 South, 48 South, and 56 South. Item number nine, discussion and consideration of the request of Edward O'Hamlin, Robinson and Cole, authorized agent for the New Canaan Library, owners along with its affiliates of properties located at 151 Main Street, 64 Maple, 444856 South Avenue for petition and change of zoning boundary for properties currently in the business and a apartment zone. Requesting chain and zoning boundary is to designate the properties LZ at 151 Main, 64 Maple, 44 South, 48 South, and 56 South. Before I turn it over to the applicant, um, just a couple of comments. Clearly, the understatement of the night will be that this is a huge deal for the town and a potential signature change for the town. We have received, um, a lot of letters regarding this application. And one thing I can assure the public is we read all the letters, um, historically on applications. We found, we have found many letters to help in, to help us think about and make our decisions. We always want to hear public input. Um, on the other hand, um, I would like to note that we have a lot of work to do on this application. And we need to devote a lot of hearing time to considering the various aspects of the regulation. We know that the public always likes to be heard. You take the time to write a letter. You want to express your opinion and we always happy to do that. The one thing I think that I can speak on behalf of the commission though, is to say that we know that there is a very large significant part of New Canaan population that supports this application as is. We also know that there's a very significant, large proportion of New Canaan population that supports the preservation of the 1913 library. So we acknowledge and we are aware that there's strong support for both sides. So particularly for those who have written letters already, um, for lack of a better way to put it, we don't necessarily need to have input, um, that may be repetitive to what you've already communicated to us. The process we're going to do is we're going to run this the way we always do for a application. And that is, we'll start with a presentation from the applicant. After the presentation from the applicant, I will ask, um, the, our advisor from a parking and traffic perspective, Mr. Galante, to then make some comments. Um, and then we will, as a commission, we'll engage in question and answer with the applicant. After that, we will then open it up to the public and included in that are assuming that we'll hear a present, a presentation from the 1913 Library Preservation Group. The one thing I want to be clear about right now is we, we have a lot of work to do. This will take a fair amount of time and I am not positive how far along we will get in the hearing tonight. We're going to have to play that a little bit by ear. We do have another application after this that's been closed, but we need to put a fair amount of time into thinking about that application as well. So my goals are to listen to the applicant's presentation, listen to Mr. Galante. The commission will, and will engage in conversation, question and answers with the applicant. And at that point in time, I'm going to ask the commissioners what we should do. Should we proceed with the hearing or should we then continue the hearing? And by the way, this application will be continued. then continue the hearing? And by the way, this application will be continued no matter what. But we may have to continue it to either next month or we may talk about having a special meeting in a week or so to entertain the public input. So we'll, we'll put as much time as possible into this tonight, but as I said, we're going to have to play things a little bit by ear. Who's here to represent the library?
I think, well, I have. Brian, okay, I have Brian and I'm just trying to find Lisa in the, in the group, but you can start, sorry.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brian Smith. I'm an attorney with Robinson and Cole. And as you're well aware, Attorney O'Hamlin was the authorized agent for the New Canaan Library, but as he is about to become a Superior Court Judge, he has had to step away from this application and I am the substitute for the New Canaan Library tonight. And what we have done is we have compiled a, a PowerPoint presentation of existing evidence that you will see tonight for, to, for ease of having everyone, the commission, as well as many members of the public who are attending this Zoom webinar to understand what, how we wish to proceed. So with that, I would like to ask Lynn if she can advance the first slides and then we can get started.
Okay, give me one second. You can start talking.
Okay. Thank you. So as the commission is well aware, the New Canaan Library has been working on how to redevelop its property for many, many years. It's had a number of studies and charrettes and public input dating far back and, and others will explain that in far better detail than I will. But what I would like to sort of set the stage for is to understand how we're going to go through the application. So as you are aware, there are really three different applications pending before you that are going to be heard all at once as the, as you, Mr. Chairman, described. The first one, of course, would be the text amendment. The second one is the map change that would, if the text amendment has passed, would change the zoning map to allow the, the overlay zone to land. And the third one is the special permanent site plan application that would allow the actual development of the, the new building and and the new library green. So what he portrays, are you sharing the screen? Do I need to share the screen?
No, no, I, I have to find it in all the other stuff, so keep talking and.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to run ahead of it in a moment, then I'll be stopped, but I will keep going. The, the text amendment, as you are aware, there was quite a detailed letter that was submitted to the commission and I'm sure you've read it, that's dated February 26th, 2021 by Attorney O'Hamlin and that summarized in, in great detail the, the theory and the reasoning behind the introduction of the text amendment for the, the library and the purpose of it is, is to propose a new section 5.10 called the quasi-public library overlay zone. And the proposed amendments to your regulations would be some definitional amendments to section 2.2 and then the new 5.10 section. And what's the purpose of the text amendment? I'm not going to go through the details because that is, has been thoroughly addressed in the letter, but I just want to highlight that the concept is that we are in a, in a couple of zones and the, and the concept here is to provide a means to allow the library to advance and, and adapt in a flexible manner going forward and we've incorporated a number of design elements that would be appropriate for a library use. And the, the library overlay zone can go over several different zones as is described in the materials, including the two that are at the property that is, that you're looking, examining tonight. And the concept is that if the overlay zone is, is placed on this property, for example, then the design requirements of that, this overlay zone must also be met as well as if there are no specific design elements of in this zone, the overlay zone, then the underlying zones, design elements must be adhered to. So you're not losing anything, it's simply a sort of an added requirement or a substitution depending on the kind of use. And the as, as we look through it, there is a, a number of things, but what it does is it allows a library to have a special permit with these types of uses. So what, and that is the, the essence of the text amendment, of course, the and that's the first thing that must be considered by the commission because as you're well aware, if the text amendment it must pass because then the overlay zone that we're requesting you land on the property would, would have to have been approved in, in that order. And then we look at the special permanent site plan that under these new regulations and the way we have designed the project that you have before you is assuming, of course, that you have approved the, the overlay zone and the map amendment so that this lands. And now you look at the special permanent site plan to see if it complies with the new provisions. So the, for purposes of tonight's presentation, what we are going to do is I'm going to have Lisa Oldham, the you know, our librarian, explain the program and how she arrived at that. And then we'll, we will have Mark Herter, the, the architect and Chris Cardney, who will address the engineering concerns and the traffic issues. And then Mark will follow up and I will conclude with a very short summary before we get to the questions. But I know that for Lisa Oldham's presentation, we're going to definitely need the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I know. I'm having a problem retrieving it. So give me just, yeah. Tell me which slide you, which I, I can't pull up the PowerPoint right this second, but I can pull up the files. So which particular sheet do you pull up?
It's going to be probably five or six slides in. So the first one that describes the, the library program that Lisa would, would start with.
Should be, I think, the fourth or fifth slide into the presentation.
Right, so I can't pull up the PowerPoint. I'm having technical difficulties pulling up the PowerPoint, but I can pull up all the, the, all the drawings that are uploaded already. So what can I pull up that would be five or six? Let me see, wait, if I can. Let me see if I can, I'm going to share, actually Lisa, if you pull up the presentation on your screen, I'm going to let you, you, you show it because I'm having technical difficulty.
Do we have Mark do that? Because Mark's got.
Mark, I, yeah, Mark can do it. Can you, can you do that, Mark?
Yeah, you, you allow him to share the screen then, so.
So I've just changed it so that you can share it because I'm, I'm having a technical problem right now. Pulling it up, so you can do that.
So Mark, can you get off mute? I just know that you're working on it.
Mark?
Well, we're all a year into this kind of work and we're just all trying to become professional zoomologists, but.
Yeah, Mr.
A little bit.
Lynn, Mr. Mr. Herter is on mute. Can you take him off mute?
Lynn, I've got my three slides. So while we wait for Mark, I, if you, if you let me, I can, I can share.
You should be able to share. I changed the setting to, because I can't.
Okay, can you see that?
We can see it.
All right. Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Oldham, Executive Director of New Canaan Library. Thank you all for having us here tonight and thank you to the community of New Canaan who have supported this library for almost 150 years. The New Canaan Library has been serving this community since 1877 and now needs a new home to support its mission, looking to the future. Like all community libraries, it is at its core a platform for the exchange of ideas and knowledge creation through open access to information and culture. Over millennia, the formats and channels that contain ideas have evolved and today we have more than ever before. At New Canaan Library, the written word, both print and digital, experiential learning, that is the lectures, workshops, classes in our curricula and the space for people to meet and work together are some of the many ways our community learns and grows together. Our library draws not only on a recent Victorian ideal of the autodidact improving himself by reading worthy tomes in silence, but also in a direct line back to the Musaian of Alexandria, learning through debate, oratory and the arts and farther again back to the ancient Greeks who sought learning through dialogue. Ucananites use their library, use of their library has held steady over the past seven years at one of the highest rates in the country with attendance at programs increasing over 70% in that same time. The library is an integral part of the fabric of the community, partnering with almost every nonprofit in town to provide the synergy and support that helps make New Canaan such a special community. The vision of the New Canaan Library is to be the community's platform for lifelong learning. To do that, we need a new home, one that is built not only for the way we learn today, but also one that is flexible and continues to be the community's third space for generations to come. As an independent association library, we exemplify the best in public-private partnerships with an exceptional volunteer board, committees and especially generous donors, ensuring that our future library serves every single Ucananite as the place for lifelong learning. I'll now speak a bit about the project history and the design challenges. The project we present here is the culmination of more than a decade of leadership, planning and hard work by the library board. I have shared with you all the timeline for this project, which is part of the official record. Hundreds of individuals and families have been involved along the way. From library volunteers who worked with the town in its 2008 master planning exercise, the 40-strong community study group who worked with Centerbrook Architects in 2012, the hundreds of library trustees and other volunteers who have given their time, talent and treasure to keep this project and the library moving forward, especially making very difficult decisions along the way. From 2018 to 2020, these plans we're about to see were shared with over a thousand Ucananites who expressed their support and from whom we raised over $16 million in the quiet leadership phase of capital raising. Since the project was shared publicly in January 2020, more Ucananites have come forward to help. As you will have read in the timeline I sent you, the library sought to include the original facade in the many early design iterations. With the acquisition in 2017 of the final adjacent property at 48 South Avenue, enabling a holistic design approach along with a feasibility study into fundraising capacity and a careful assessment of the functional needs for the building and grounds. The design could no longer incorporate the original facade into the building within these parameters. The library then began to explore how it might retain the original structure freestanding on site. Several options for relocating it on the green were explored. In weighing these options, the library considered the following. First, the cost to rebuild the structure. The library saw estimates from several companies to preserve the viable remnants of the original library. Specifically, the front section and the remaining north and the east and north facing walls. And then to rebuild the whole at a reasonable standard of quality. These estimates have been updated with current pricing and information and have also been sent to a third party for peer review. The estimates for this 300, 1300 square foot building are around $3 million plus significant additional costs due to contamination issues. A renovation must include the installation of an HVAC system, plumbing, wiring and making it ADA compliant inside and out. It must include site work to account for drainage and contouring. A foundation would need to be rebuilt, as would the missing walls. The roof and portico columns were replaced with modern synthetic materials several decades ago. And there would be an additional cost to move it on the site. Hazardous materials. Investigations by hazardous materials engineers show significant levels of asbestos and lead in this original building in the basement, in the floors and in the roof. The cost of abatement and disposal of this contamination and the need to virtually gut the entirety would add significant cost increases. In this scenario, the library, having invested millions of dollars to preserve the building for which it has no functional need, would then be required to fund its operation in perpetuity, including staffing, heating, cooling. The project to build a new library, accounting for the acquisition of surrounding properties, the early design and planning work and the total project costs will likely be funded at about 75% from private philanthropy and we hope 25% from municipal contributions. To add another $3+ million plus the future operational funding to this cost is simply not possible. New Canaan Library has made an offer to the New Canaan Preservation Alliance to allow them to take possession of the original building through legal correspondence and followed up with a meeting with their lawyer. They have declined this offer, but continue to agitate for the library to change its plans to keep the building. New Canaan Library will not keep this building on site. To preserve this facade would be an attractive reminder of earlier times. But it comes at enormous expense to the library and yet no functional purpose. New Canaan Library is an association library. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit with an independent board and a private philanthropy base. The building and grounds are private property. The town provides a generous grant each year to partially support library operations. This grant is an exchange for value. The library provides enormous benefit to the community, one that, were it a public agency, would come at a far greater cost to the municipality annually than the single grant. Philanthropic donations provide the remainder of annual operating funds as well as 100% of the capital costs. This system works for New Canaan. The decision not to keep the original building was careful, reasoned and was reached by dedicated volunteers advised by professionals. The library has discussed this with town council, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. Last winter, the town council voted not to tie up its investment in the project by dictating preservation or design considerations. On that basis, the library has invested tremendous resource to produce the plan we have submitted and that we will all see tonight. To reject the design will hurt New Canaan Library immensely. The funds raised will be returned, future funds will likely dry up and it will discourage future giving and the volunteerism that is so critical to the library and which makes this town the incredible place it is. and which makes this town the incredible place it is. Libraries are a critical asset to thriving communities, providing space for the community to come together as individuals, families, and through the many groups who work together to strengthen the very fabric of civic life. Libraries are for people, providing a platform for learning and culture that supports our students, seniors, and everyone in between. The New Canaan Library has an extraordinarily high level of use by any metric, as well as a broad range of community engagement. Our citizens deserve a great library, and this plan will enable the delivery of a best-in-class service with the top-notch programs, services, and collections that New Canaan expects. And now I will hand over to Mark Herter.
I think Mark is ready with the PowerPoint, so he'll need to be able to share the screen and to start from where he's going to be proceeding in the PowerPoint. Thank you, Mark. Not sure if he, I think he's still on mute.
He should be able to speak.
I'm muted.
Mark, stop sharing your screen for a second.
He's not muted.
There's, I don't see him muted.
No.
He's, he's not muted at all. He's allowed to speak.
So, Mark, he may, he may have to go through his telephone as well.
Yeah, he's, he's trying to mute and unmute himself right now. He's, but he's unmuted. Mark, can you unshare your screen right now? Okay, Tiger, can you try and share your screen with the PowerPoint for me, please? Does, can Mark speak now?
I don't know if he's trying. I'm waiting to see if he's.
Does, does Mark want to join via phone? And then I just need his number to bring him in.
Yes, I'll ask him. Hopefully he's.
This is Chris Cardney. I'm after Mark. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that we don't delay the commission, Chris, why? If, unless Mark is getting Lynn his phone number. It would make more sense that we have Mark next.
Lynn, I've just sent you Mark's number.
Okay.
I can see him there, and the phone calls Lynn.
Yeah. Wait, I just. He should be.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yay.
All right, great.
Hey, Mark.
So I was, yeah, I was on my phone, not on the computer audio, so I didn't realize you had to let me in on my phone as well. All right, so we're.
Design, so go ahead. Thank you.
Great, great. So I'm going to talk tonight about the site and building design. And I'll just remind everybody in our submission package, we, we shared some of the goals and objectives and policies of the plan of conservation and development and the ways in which this design really addresses those. So I'm going to touch on those as I talk about the site and the building design. But first, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through the construction sequence, and then I'm going to turn it over to Chris, let him talk about civil engineering, and then it'll come back to me to talk about landscape design and building design. Right, so if you go to that slide, Tiger, the, so what you see here is the existing. Let's see if I can get this full screen. What you see is the existing conditions. I can't see, I can't see the full slide. Does everybody else see that? Okay, great. So this is the existing condition, the existing building footprint with the parking areas, the roadways, the walkways. Center School lot is to the bottom of the page. Library is to the top. So Maple is in between. Main Street on the right, South Avenue on the left, and then Cherry at the top. So if you go to the next image. So this is the transitional phase where the new building is open by TCO. The existing building is still in place, and everything gets moved over to the new building. And then the existing building is removed or relocated and makes way for the new library green and the new building. And then, so here is it in full open mode. So you have the new library green and the new building fully open and operating. The center-school lot relationship, the entry to the, to the front door across Maple, which I'll talk about in more detail in a few minutes. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk about civil engineering, and then it'll come back to me.
Okay, good evening. My name's Chris Cardney. I'm a professional engineer with Langin Engineering, civil engineer. If you could advance to the next slide. The first slide is really just to orient where we are, where the site is. And for some reason, there you go. Okay. So what you see here in, in blue is the perimeter of the library site, as well as the center-school lot and their relation to each other. The arrows indicate access to the parcels. So the one-way arrows out to Cherry and to South. We have a one-way into the parking at the southeast corner, and we have a two-way in and out along Maple Street. Kind of off-center, we have another in and out from Maple Street. And I don't know if you can see, but to the south of that is a one-way into Center School Lot. Today, there's about 63 spaces on the library parcel, and there's about 172 spaces on Center School Lot. And next slide. So this shows the overall development. Center School Lot is pretty easy. It stays the same as it does today. And in this, in the upper portion, you can see where the new library will be situated along the Maples in South corner. We also have just really one entrance from South, which is two-way, which is really for loading purposes. And next slide. This shows a blow-up of just the library parcel in a, in a, if you could scroll down, there you go. So just, just highlight some of the site features. We have a green, which Mark is going to talk much more about in his part of the presentation. We have the loading on the back of the library. Up at the corner, South, South and Maple, we have the children's garden, which again, Mark will expand on that. And for Maple Street, we've introduced two improvements. One is a drop-off. This is really short-term drop-off pickup in terms of whether it's children or anyone else coming in and out of the library. And we have a crossing, an improved crossing south to the center-school lot to really channelize where people will cross the roadway. And the next slide, we're going to zoom in that area a little bit. We've, we've met with the town this week and some suggestions or clarifications of this. We're going to make the crossing a raised crosswalk to further slow traffic down. And we'll have what we call rapid-flash beacons. There are signs. There's a picture there where you would, you would approach the sign. You would hit a button, and it would stop traffic so you could cross at will. Being at grade, it's ADA. It's accessible to all. And the other improvement we talked about was for the drop-off and ensuring that that's accessible as well. So it gives a spot for, for drop-offs there. I didn't really talk much about parking. We did do a parking assessment as part of this. Maybe if you go back to two slides. Because libraries aren't defined by the zoning regulations, we did a parking study. We looked at other industry standards based on a square footage basis. And we also looked at the auditorium use, since that's a large gathering space. The two don't really intersect in terms of use, meaning the library would be used primarily at times when the auditorium is not at its peak use. That study was reviewed by the Towns Consultant, peer review by Hardesty and Hanover, who looked at it a little bit different in terms of adjacent libraries in other towns. But the, our, our results were pretty similar. I think we were 12 spaces off from, you know, what we would recommend versus what they recommended. So Center School Lot will have, the final verdict was Center School Lot would have about 76 spaces dedicated for the library use. It's an open lot now through parking arrangements, and so that's part of the, part of the parking. Okay, so I'll go back to, I guess, slide number five, which is stormwater. So what you're looking at here is the orange represents existing outlets from the site. There's about four sites, four outlets today. They all combine in Main Street and ultimately discharge in a 30-inch pipe southeast of here. And the blue is, is the proposed piping. So you're looking at the proposed piping in light blue on the site. The dash lines represent stormwater basins that will do a few things. One, they're going to detain runoff. They're going to reduce the volume of the runoff. They're going to treat the runoff. And in the landscape, they're actually going to be part of the landscape features. So these wouldn't be your shopping center-type basins behind the loading area. These are actually an aesthetic feature. The blue represents the outlets, the four outlets that are maintained after they're routed. And again, same as the existing condition, they are going to be discharged to Main Street and ultimately to the southeast. One thing I didn't mention, the WQU, that represents a water quality treatment. And that's collected from the, essentially from the back area that makes its way to Main Street. Next slide, please. And the last thing I'll touch on, and we can revisit these when it's, when it's time for questions, is, is new utility services. We have utilities in the roadways adjacent to us. So we'll be bringing all new utilities, water, including fire service and a new hydrant in the back, telecom and electric and sanitary sewer for the project. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mark.
Great, thank you, Chris. So I want to talk about, before I go into the building design, I want to talk about the landscape design because this is such a critical aspect of the project and of the site. So if you go to the next slide, what shows here is the full site, which is just under 2.2 acres. The building occupies about 22% of that. The, the plantings, which are seen around the building, along Main Street and along Cherry and behind the gas station, occupy about 40% of the site. So that's about 38,000 square feet of plantings. And then the lawn, which we're calling the library green, is about 14% of the site. And then the terraces and the service area make up the rest of that. So at 38,000 square feet of plantings, it's really, you think of it as an extremely rich habitat for wildlife. And the, the library is on the pollinator path. And what's essential really about the way in which we design and develop this landscape is really to think about those terms. Think about native species. Think about the habitat, the ability to maintain and enhance and enrich the environment of, of open space and of downtown, similar to the principles that are described in the Plan of Conservation and Development. So when you think about this space and the 38,000 square feet of plantings, there are predominantly native species of trees and shrubs and ground cover. We do have a small percentage of non-natives, but they are predominantly natives. And what's valuable about that is that, one, they require less water, but, two, they are such an essential part of the pollinator path because as birds and habitat come along this path, they expect and they know the native plants and the native species, and they expect to find that there. And so the development of this not only makes it rich for human habitat, but also rich for a biodiverse wildlife habitat. So if you go to the next slide, I want to walk you through a few areas of the landscape. And the first one I want to talk about is the children's garden, which is at the corner of South and Maple. If you go to the next slide, you can see an enlarged version of that. And the children's garden is really this secret little garden and a private oasis. It extends the experiential learning of children's library outside. And if you go to the next slide, you can see it animated a little bit. The, the area has a variety of trees, small trees, that are really wonderful for child scale. It's, it's got stone walls on the south side, a fence on the west side along South Avenue, and it's really a protected place for children, for small groups, large groups. In and amongst the plantings, kind of a, a retreat within, within the library. So it's a wonderful spot. Great for group activities, opportunities for plantings that children can do just outside of the Storytime Room and the, and the program room. So that's one of the features of the landscape. If you go to the next slide. So that's one of the features of the landscape. If you go to the next slide. Another area that's that's really important, and Chris touched on this a little bit, on the north side along Cherry is the the bioswale or the basin. And that area, in order to operate as a true bioswale and a true basin, it has a unique set of plants. It's sandy soil, so it's well draining. But the plant type has to allow for a large influx of water and then dry conditions as well. And Simpson has done a really great job of designing this. They've done a lot of them. And this will act in a wonderful way to filter, will not only gather the water and filter the water, but reduce peak discharge to the storm system. Next slide. And then the space along Main Street is nearly 10,000 square feet of plantings. And it is, what's great about this is its size and its contiguous nature, which allows for a much greater diversity of not only plant types, but wildlife. When you have small areas of plantings, habitat really doesn't do well. But in a place like this, that is over 10,000 square feet, they can thrive. Next slide. What we've done, even with that that rich planting along Main Street, is opened up some view corridors so that the relationship of the sidewalk and the street and the green are shared. And so as you see in the plan here, these are a number of view corridors from within. And you'll see if you go to the next slide. At the corner of Cherry and Main, there's a view to the library green and to the library. And we've developed on Cherry Street, another really important principle of the plan of conservation and development is to try and enhance pedestrian circulation, not only in downtown and at the edge of downtown, which is where the site sits, but develop ways in which on Cherry Street to make it more friendly to pedestrians. So what we have done is we've pulled the sidewalk off of the street edge. We've developed a number of seating areas along Cherry. We've got red maples that do really well at the edge of the street. And then cherry trees, which give you a wonderful place to sit beneath and filter the sunlight coming from the south in those seating areas. And then along Main Street on the left side, we have a series of plantings that's are are limbed up to give you a relationship and a view from the street to the green. If you go to the next slide, you can see a view along Main. We've kept the existing stone wall along Main Street. And we've burned it up to the library and to the terrace. And we've limbed up the trees so that you get some really nice scrub and ground cover, but a good view corridor and a relationship between the two. Next slide. Uh, one more. So here is a section at the terrace just outside of the library. You can see the relationship. So this is right near the basement area, and we've got a dense planting to screen some of the some of the area to the basement. And then as you move north along the site and along the sidewalk, next slide. We start to reduce, limb up the trees, slope the grade, and you get a really nice visible relationship between the terrace and the sidewalk. Next slide. And then all the way down further, closer to the corner of Main and Cherry, where grade is quite close, you get a really nice, again, a beautiful relationship amongst the ground cover and shrubs and trees up to the library green. So that in times where I know there'll there's lots of plans for events downtown, the relationship between, you know, parades and the library green and larger events will will be easily seen. And the energy between those two, I think, will be really wonderful. Next slide. So I'll come back to to landscape design if there are any questions, but I'm going to move on to building design and building inspiration. Next slide. So New Canaan has a very rich history of architectural history of mid-century modern. And there are two buildings in particular that we took inspiration from in the development of the library. And the first is the noise house, which you really experience that. It's it's grounded, you know, in nature. The stone grows out of the earth and you really experience it from the outside with glimpses of what's happening inside through the stone archways. And so it is, you know, it's it's a wonderful experience as a building, but very different than the other inspiration that we had. Next slide. And so the glass house is an entirely different experience. That's really experiencing landscape from within. Looking out over sits atop the landscape and looks out over the vistas. And so our inspiration for the building was to put the glass house on the noise house and develop a an architecture that is reminiscent of the two. Next slide. So before I show you some images of the building, I just wanted to walk through a few really important components of the design as they relate to both planning and conservation of the planet conservation and development. So the continuous wall lengths are really an important part of the design of of downtown and a lot of the zones in which are part of New Canaan. And so what we did is look very carefully at the scale and the elements along the street edge. Think about the noise house and the the stone boxes and develop niches that are glass that reveal the happenings within. So if you go to the next slide, you can see along Maple Street that while we could have made each one of the elements a lot longer, we were careful to think about the scale and rhythm along the street. And so as you start from the right side at Main Street and continue across to South Avenue, we've developed stone boxes and glass reveals in between. And at the center is the entry to the library. And then at the far left, we have a two-story glass space which reveals the children's library and the adult library on the second floor. Next slide. And so similarly along South Avenue, we've carried that rhythm around the corner in glass and stone elements along the street. Next slide. So you can see in the elevation along Maple, we've got a series of stone boxes with large glass openings that reveal what's happening on the interior. And the center of the building is the entry, which aligns directly across from the center school lot. Next slide. And so you can see that in the rendering. This is the entry at the from Center School Lot. You can see the crosswalk and the signs that Chris talked about. We have an entry terrace right at the front that greets you with the New Canaan Library name. And the landscape aligns the building. We have a series of trees that offer dappled light to the to the building. Next slide. The other important thing that I want to talk about is building height. So we did, as we do, as is required and we do on on all projects, we developed the grade plane to establish the average grade and then the average building height for the project. So it's a long calculation. You go around a perimeter of the building to establish the average grade. And then if you go to the next slide, so the building height, max maximum average building height for this building, it's a two-story building. It has a mezzanine level with the living room sitting in the middle of it, but two stories, 31.1 feet. Our allowable is 40 feet and two and a half stories. Next slide. And then for the maximum total building height, we have 46.8 feet and the allowable is 50 feet. Next slide. So you can see in a section of the building, we've got the living room right at the center of the building. You can see the two-story building, but at the edge of the street, we've kept it a single story, really for the scale and the rhythm along the street. And the largest and the tallest element is in the center of the building, away from the street, as you'll see in the 3D in a moment. Next. For for building materials, you saw in the rendering, but I just wanted to walk you through these a little bit. We've got stone stone cladding on the building. We've got metal aluminum windows and aluminum panel system, both at the base and at the top. And then the overhang is a is an aluminum. Got a very thin edge and we pulled the insulation back so that we get a long sleek overhang. It gives you shadow into the space. And it is a metal panel that is wood grain color. Next slide. So you can see it again in the rendering. Next slide. So the library sits in a unique location. And as the plan of conservation and development talks about the approach to the downtown, this is really the edge and the arrival zone for the downtown. And so if you go to the next slide, at the corner of South and Maple and at the corner of Main and Maple are really the two points at which the the P O C D talks about gateways to town. And the library really is a unique opportunity to celebrate those. Next slide. So at the corner of South and Maple, you have a view that greets you as you're entering downtown. And that's the children's garden right on the corner. And then children's library at the lower level and the adult library at the upper level. Next slide. On the east side, at Main and Maple, again, this is a gateway and an opportunity. The the library, this is the auditorium side of the building. And there is an opportunity, you'll see in a moment, the stage projects out into the space and greets you as you come into downtown. Next. And of course, at the at the corner of Cherry and Main, you're similarly greeted by the landscape and by the library green with the the library in the distance, looking over over the green and the terrace. An important thing that I want to talk about a little bit more along Cherry Street. If you go to the next slide, you can see that on the existing street, the sidewalk on the library side is quite narrow. The trees are pulled back from the edge and the sidewalk is really at the edge of the street. And what we have done in order to make it, in order to enhance the pedestrian experience, is we've pulled the trees out to the edge, moved the sidewalk back, and then created a series of sitting areas and zones within the landscape. So if you go to the next slide, just want to reiterate, so the red maples are out at the edge of the street. Sidewalk is pulled back and then the seating areas are south of that. And so the cherry trees, there's really two lines of trees, two buffer zones before you get to the park and to the library green. Next slide. So I want to walk you through the building and the building design. This is the ground level floor. So if you go to the next slide, the concourse is really the arrival place, the hub, the exciting area where there are new book collections, there's a gallery space, there's a cafe. It is the place for pre-events for the auditorium. So some of the stacks that are in there can be movable. It is a connection to the terrace and to the outside. And it has wonderful views out to the landscape and to downtown. Next slide. So this is an axonometric view of the whole ground floor. You can go to the next slide. There's a blow up of the concourse area and you can see that the the gallery is on the lower left. Stacks are in the middle with a bunch of seating areas between, and then the cafe on the far north end. Next slide. This is a view of the cafe. So it's a really great space with views out to the landscape and to the library green. Wonderful place to sit, grab a cup of coffee, and whether you want to stay there or go into the library out onto the terrace, your choice. Next slide. So the children's library is one of the one of the spaces that is really vital to the library. It is more than twice the size of the current children's library. It is all about experiential learning, which is the the major growth part of the library. The aspects of experiential learning are really what the library is all about. And as Lisa said earlier, what it plans to be all about as we move through the century. Next slide. So this is a axon of the layout of the children's area. Got a series of stacks, got a number of areas for toddlers and tweens to enjoy. Got some program rooms and a storytime room, which opens up to the children's garden. Next. So this is a rendering of the children's library library space. Lots of stacks, lots of seating areas. Program rooms are off to the left. The tween area is off to the right. And then up on the upper, on the mid-level is actually the living room, which I'll show you in a moment. Next. So this is a great little area for the tweens. They have their own private space in which to study, read books, hang out. Their collection is around the room. Um, their collection is around the room. Um, and it is, um, connected to and shared by the children's library. Next. Um, the auditorium is a, is a really important space. So the library does over fifteen hundred programs a year. And the expectation is that it will do even more in this new facility. So it really needs a spectacular space in which to do that. We're showing it laid out as, as a, uh, a speaking event, but it can certainly be, um, used for, for dinners or special events. It can spill out into the terrace. Um, it can have pre-events in the concourse. And it also has a, a teaching, uh, kitchen adjacent to it. Next. So one of the great things about, you can go to the next slide. One of the great things about the auditorium is the ability to have it open, fully open. And usable for more than three hundred people or divided up in the ways that I am showing here. So that you can have a group, maybe somebody's doing a speaking event or a small music ensemble. On the, on the east side, on the right, and then there's a meeting in the middle. And then a teaching, uh, kitchen event. Maybe there's a, a chef or, you know, a small group that is using, uh, the teaching kitchen. So there's a lot of really great opportunities for not only large events, but smaller events. Next. So this is a view, um, into the auditorium. Um, and this is the, what was shown in number one. So the, the, the larger front part of it on the east side. Again, it has great views to the outside. So if you're doing a small music ensemble here, um, and you may want, you know, lots of wonderful daylight. If you're going to do a, a, a talk, um, you pull the shades, you drop the projection screen. And, um, you do a presentation in here. Next. So, um, this is the teaching kitchen that I spoke about. And what we imagine happening here, what Lisa and the library imagines. Is that there'll be events like this where there may be a visiting chef. This can be, um, you see a, a monitor, um, up on, above the hood. So that people in the back of the room can see what the chef is working on and participate in that. Um, there may be programs that they run for the library. Somebody may do a program, kids may come in and do an event. Um, uh, so there are a lot of different ways. This can also be used for a caterer if you're going to do an event in the auditorium. So there's a lot of opportunities for how this is set up. Um, there's some really good, um, commercial, um, kitchen equipment in there. So that you can do a variety of things, whether it's a guest chef or somebody doing a program. Next. Up on the mezzanine level, so if you go up one level, uh, half a level from the concourse. There are a couple of really important spaces there. The maker space, um, which is on the west side, is really all about the extension of experiential learning. So that's a lab space for kids, um, adults to come and experiment. Next slide. The living room is really the heart of the library. Um, a great place to sit, read, relax, whether it's by the fireplace or in the middle of the room. Next slide. So you can see in this section, and I'll talk about this a little bit more later on. But the living room really sits at the heart of, of the library. Um, and joins the concourse, the entry area to the second floor, um, in a unique way. Next slide. So you can see, um, as you come up from the concourse, this is, this is the living room. So the fireplace is at the end. There's a lot of different ways in which you can sit, uh, read and work in this space. You've got views to the second floor, um, in the adult area on both sides. Stacks to the right, and then as you go up the stairs. Next slide. You arrive at the business center. This is really the quiet floor. Um, the business center, which, um, has become a really popular, uh, use for the New Canaan Library. Business center and co-working area, all are quiet spaces on this floor. Next slide. So here's a view of the business center. So working, copying, um, a, a variety of different things that you can do within this space. Next. And then just beyond that is a co-working area. Next. So tables, chairs, uh, opportunities for laptops, working area. Incredibly great views out to South Avenue and south of the library. Next. And then the teen library is on the northwest side. Um, again, an expanded area. Um, next slide. You can see a view of that. And so you have a variety of seating areas within that. Some stacks, really great workspaces. Just outside of that, in the, in the corridor that is around the living room are a series of tutoring spaces. And so these, you know, incredibly hardworking teens have a space of their own in which to work and connect with other teens. Next. Um, we have a lot of different meeting rooms in various sizes, small and medium and large. Um, those can be signed out, um, and used for small or larger groups. Um, next slide. And just outside the large meeting room, the boardroom, is a rooftop terrace and a green roof. Which has spectacular views out to the green and to downtown. Next slide. So you can see this is the rooftop terrace and the views out to the green and to downtown. Next. So the last slide that I want to talk about really is, um, an essential part of not only. Uh, a component of the plan of conservation and development, but really a mission of the library and of our office. We look not only very carefully, but critically at the sustainable aspects of the building. And this is really a forward-thinking, highly sustainable, um, building that we are developing. And we've worked really hard through a series of iterative, um, modeling, uh, programs. To test sustainable ideas in the building. Um, one of the things that is, uh, really wonderful about this, so this is a section through the living room. And what we were able to achieve through the use of skylights and, um, carving the, the ceiling around the skylights. Is to bounce daylight down into the heart of the building. You know, it's a fairly big footprint. And to be able to bring daylight down into the building and achieve daylight autonomy of two hundred lux at the floor. Um, is not an easy task. But we're able to do that in ways, um, by testing the design, manipulating the design. And, um, being able to bounce light off and get it down into the space. So not only will it be a really wonderful space, but it gives us the opportunity, um. To reduce the energy load on the building by turning the lights down, developing good quality daylight. Minimizing glare within the space and operating, um, in a really efficient way within the building. We have high efficiency HVAC systems. Um, we have fritted glass, so on the upper right, you can see we've got a unique frit pattern that is like books and birds. That'll vary in its density from bottom to top, uh, playfully on the outside of the building. So that'll shield some of the heat gain and some of, uh, the glare as well. Um. And, uh, another really important point is this building is developed as an all-electric building. So the expectation is that we will have PVs on the roof. And that, um, we'll be able to have a really great relationship between the building. And, um, renewable energy on the roof, driving down the E U I and taking advantage of green energy, uh, in a unique way. So I'm going to end there. I'm going to turn it back over to Brian and, uh, let him, uh, do closing remarks.
Yes, thank you, Mark. And, uh, we can leave the screen right where it is, if we, if we can for a minute. Because now that we have the context, uh, for, of, of what is actually being proposed. Under the Special Permanent Site Plan, I want to go back for just a minute and explain how, uh, what the text amendment. In the con, in the true reality of it, what this really means and why this commission should approve it. So the text amendment is really calling just for three definitional cha- additions. We're going to define a private park, define a mezzanine and, and state exactly what a quasi-public library is. And I, I think it just bears stating that the quasi-public library would be a facility that is. A, a private nonprofit corporation or be an agency of the town of New Canaan. That is open to the general public and principally serving the local community. Where professional librarians maintain services and collections of resources in many formats. That reflect and support the intellectual and cultural interests of its constituents. A quasi-public library may also include facilities for learning, cultural enrichment, information exchange. Such as auditoriums and spaces for communities and community events, teaching, learning, meeting rooms, workshops, gallery space and digital technology. Now those are the definitions and we have the, as I said at the outset, the proposal for the quasi-public library overlay zone. And the overlay zone would enable an applicant to request a special permit approval of a development. Complies provisions of the section instead of mandatory base standards of the underlying zones. And it addresses unique spatial needs and, and of a, a library. And also it's going to provide and encourage, uh, community and nonprofit events add open space. And enhance pedestrian connectivity to shops and services. And, and the final point I would like to make for the commission is that, a- as you are well aware. When there is a text amendment and a map change before you, we need to establish and why Mark did such a very good job in the presentation of noting this. That it is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So we are looking at the two thousand fourteen Town Plan of Conservation and Development. And explain exactly how this plan that you have before you and the text amendment and the map change all are consistent with it. So really the, the plan of conservation and development, as you know, is really in two essential parts. The strategic element that presents overall land use policies and also an implementation element. Just an advisory resource for how to accomplish the goals that you set in the plan of conservation and development. So how do we comply? First of all, if you look at chapter four in the strategic element, which is the chapter four is to nurture downtown. For example, residents requested pocket parks and green spaces. We, we certainly achieved that. Proposed amendments, how are they consistent? Well, not only do they retain a library facility downtown, but it's also responsive to the library's unique design and operational needs. And it also supports, uh, P O C D's efforts to create a vibrant pedestrian oriented downtown. It also allows for special permit to allow six, like a private park as an accessory use for the library. And also for cultural passive recreational and civic uses open to the public. And it also encourages once again pedestrian access and to the public right of ways. So in chapter five, it enhances livability. It's a twenty-first century facility, uh, that has, uh, that addresses unique spatial functional and flexible requirements of the library plant. As you know, over time, uh, libraries have to evolve like every, every other use, uh, as we move forward. And we are trying to achieve it for not only just now at this part of the twenty-first century, but going forward. And we think this, uh, regulation allows the flexibility that libraries need now and coming forward. So chapter six, and why I, I want to keep the, the slide that you have before you. Chapter six is to achieve sustainability and resiliency. And we think that this design, the center brick is created and does that in a, in an absolutely outstanding fashion. But the regulations that we are proposing will require that we specifically encourage incorporation of low-impact development. And use of proper building design and materials, uh, for passive solar heating, passive cooling. To reduce energy consumption, just as you heard. So now we turn to the last part of the P O C D, the implementation element. And the first goal that we're looking at is to preserve and enhance open space. And the proposed amendments do this as well, because here we're asking that the requirements would. Allow for open space greens that are sorely lacking in the center of downtown. And you know, here we have, as Mark had described, a gateway to the downtown. And this would be a, a very good attribute and certainly consistent with the plan of conservation and development. And then the next goal is to maintain and enhance the character of downtown. How does the proposed amendments do that? Well, the primary objective of the regulations is to enhance and sustain the downtown area. Is a dynamic mixed-use pedestrian oriented environment. We think, uh, the, these, the design you have before you checks all these boxes. And that the regulations as they are drafted, we, we, uh, spent many, many, uh, years. And, and meetings with town staff, oh, you know, to going over, uh, you know, regulatory language. To develop what is in fact before you. So we think that we have certainly, uh, devised regulations that, that serve our purposes. But also, uh, our enhancements for the town. And going forward also, what, what other implementation requirements are there? It to, to guide development and redevelopment, which we think this does. And to support the downtown, you know, to help to maintain anchor uses such as town hall, the post office. And the library, which are all mentioned in the plan of conservation and development. This does that for the library, uh, very well. And finally, the, i- i- to enhance the walking environment and to maintain environmental health. I think the plans you have before you, the, the landscaping, the, the attributes, the, the library green. And the, uh, interior uses and community, uh, functions that are going to be where we have fifteen hundred programs now. We hope to have more going forward. All show that the, this amendment, and when you couple that with the goals and objectives of the plan of conservation and development. That you should find that our proposed amendments and definitional, uh, changes. Are consistent with the two thousand fourteen plan of conservation and development. Now, we, we understand that there are probably many questions that the commission has. And we thank you very much for allowing us to make this presentation before you. And we stand ready to address, uh, any, any questions or comments or requests for further information that you may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Um, I originally said, um, I wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Galante, who's the town's parking and traffic advisor to talk next. But listening, I've changed my mind, um, before Mr. Galante speaks. Um, I'll have some additional questions on traffic and parking, but perhaps. Um, I'll have some additional questions on traffic and parking, but perhaps what we do first is, is just let's open it up to the commissioners. So commissioners, questions for the applicant.
John, Chris, uh, one of the commissioners have a couple of questions, if I may. Uh, not in any particular order. Um, I noticed there is no handicap parking on site. Could you talk about some thinking regarding that?
Yes, sir. I, I think Chris and/or Mark can answer that question. I don't know who would like to field that one.
Mark, do you want to take this one or do you, do you want me to?
Um, Chris, go ahead. Go ahead. I can, I can follow up.
Okay, um, that is a correct statement. There is, uh, no parking on site. All the parking is located at Center School Lot. Um, there are accessible spaces in that lot and they are closest to the library, uh, where the new crossing is. And, um, we are providing a drop-off, a zone, uh, that will accommodate accessibility.
Regarding the drop-off zone, if you have a van, for example, or a larger vehicle that may be dropping off someone who is in a motorized wheelchair or some other type of, uh, appliance like that, uh, those vehicles again can be somewhat big. I'm wondering the size of the drop-off zone, whether that would be adequate for, uh, such a vehicle to be able to drop off or pick up someone using such a device?
Yeah, there are standards for ADA drop-offs and this, uh, drop-off is, is going to be modified to accommodate that. Normally they would, uh, it would be at grade. There would be no curbing in between the vehicle and the sidewalk. And they'd also be able to, uh, unload on the sidewalk side.
Uh, also the question regarding access to emergency vehicles and particularly thinking about fire and ambulance. Um, there's the one loading zone area you have, uh, towards the, uh, gas station side of the building. I hope you understand that. Could you talk about, um, the, uh, accessibility of such vehicles for emergency services and their ability to do their thing, uh, if, if called upon?
Yeah, we did look at the turnaround for a vi- a fire vehicle. And so it's, you could see it's a somewhat odd shape to it. It's, it's not just completely square and that's to allow for turning vehicles for emergency vehicles and, um, uh, trash.
I, I assume regarding emergency vehicles, you've had consultation with the fire marshal and the fire marshal has blessed all that?
I think that's being done as part of this application.
No, actually, uh, actually, Chris, we did meet with the fire marshal and we talked about access, uh, fire truck access around, uh, the building and the perimeter and, um, they were comfortable with that.
Thank you, Mark.
Also the question regarding, um, HVAC, a particularly use of perhaps, uh, HEPA air filters and other types of, uh, filters for to enhance indoor air quality and the exchange rate of airs within the building, particularly during winter months when things may be particularly tight. Um, just wondering how you're thinking about those issues for, um, uh, that the health of patrons?
Yeah, so that's an important topic today, um, no doubt, and for the last year. And, uh, we and our engineers have looked at that really carefully, um, over the last year. The, the change rate, um, so the, the challenge of course is the balance of sustainability and the change of air, right, and the rate at which you change air. And the number of air changes that you would typically have in a high-volume space, say in a concerned, um, with a COVID environment or in a lab. So, uh, we're looking carefully at that. The way we've, uh, designed the system, we have a series of smaller units, uh, that are used in each individual space. They, uh, mix the air and exchange the air, uh, really well. The location, so we've analyzed that with our engineers and I think, um, we could go into detail or I could have them go into detail about that. But it is a critical aspect of the design and the layout of the spaces. Some of those spaces are a larger volume, like the auditorium and even the children's room, which has a higher, uh, volume space and, uh, the living room. And so those units are larger. The air exchange certainly within the auditorium will be greater based on, uh, the volume of people within that space.
Okay, um, regarding the, the internal finishes, uh, this also relates to indoor air quality. I'm wondering about use of, um, uh, volatile organic compounds and other things that can harm in- indoor air quality as far as the finish of the, uh, building as well as, uh, chairs and tables and other things in the building, uh, that can have these types of, um, health challenges and how you all are thinking about that.
So, um, we've done a number of, uh, sustainable buildings, uh, in our office. And what is, um, I did my first lead building over 20 years ago. And I can tell you that the challenge, um, for getting manufacturers to, uh, to reveal what is in their products and the manufacturing processes was very difficult 21 years ago. Um, that's not to say it's, uh, it's perfect today. However, we have come a long way. So we now have EPDs, environmental product declarations and HPDs, um, which, which talk about the materials and the processes for those materials. So we look really carefully at our specifications, um, to think about, uh, the materials that we put within the space and the ways in which, uh, the building is put together. So that's, that includes the glues and processes and everything else. It's a good question though and an important one today.
As the final question has to do with, sorry, toilets and restrooms, um, two-part question. First is, um, some buildings on purpose from a sustainability perspective are catching, uh, rain runoff from, from the roof and using that for, uh, non-potable water sort, water uses such as toilet flushing. This way you don't run it through the sewer system and then have to pump, uh, treated water for toilet flushing, which is probably maybe not the best idea in the grand scheme of things. I'm wondering how it all, how of all you are thinking about some of these issues and for water conservation?
Yeah, so one of the things that we do in, in the, um, the iterative modeling design that we have for the project is we look not only at, at daylighting and energy, but we look at water usage. And so, uh, you know, we've modeled that and tested it. We are using low-flow fixtures here, which will reduce the amount of water being used. We did look at the opportunity to capture rainwater. And one of the challenges with that is, is really cost and logistics. So if you are going to capture rainwater, and we've done it on some other projects that, that we have done. If you're going to capture rainwater, you really need, um, two plumbing systems, two pipe system. Um, one that captures the rainwater and filters it and it is used technically, um, it has to be filtered and then it's really, it's not potable water, um, until it is filtered through a UV system. And even then it can only be used for toilet flushing and not for drinking. So you really end up with a dual-pipe system for a building, which oftentimes when you get the storage tank and the plumbing and the piping is prohibitively expensive. So we did look at it, um, budget-wise, it really just did not work.
And finally, on the to- uh, from the restrooms, are you looking at, uh, unisex restrooms or, uh, gender-specific restrooms?
So currently we have gender-specific restrooms.
Thank you. Those are my questions for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner, thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Turner?
Yes, hi. It's Kent Turner. Um, I just made some observations, have a few questions for you, but I'd like to thank, uh, you know, Mark and your team for doing a very good job, actually a very nice job presenting the material and introducing the project to us. And, uh, we, we appreciate you for that. Uh, my first question is, uh, on the handicap parking. I noticed that, um, or appeared that, uh, you would, uh, actually have to go out into Maple Street in a wheelchair to get to the crosswalk. Is that correct? I didn't see a sidewalk from the parking lot to the crosswalk.
That, that is correct. It's the, um, the existing lot as it is today. So they would, um, they'd have to go out into the, into the sidewalk to get to the crosswalk.
Uh, I'm sorry, if I understood you correctly, you're saying there's a sidewalk there or do they have to go on the street?
It, there's a sidewalk, um, along Maple, so they would.
On both sides of Maple?
Yes.
So, uh, actually let me, let me just clarify, on the south side of Maple, there is the sidewalk. On the north side, there is only a partial sidewalk. However, on our project, we are going to add the sidewalk continuously on the north side along Maple.
Okay, good. Um, you know, and this is a, I know, a very sensitive issue. Uh, the, the, the traffic on Maple, along with the pedestrian traffic is going to create some real serious issues. You know, I appreciate your blinking lights and raising the crosswalk. But, um, you know, it really is a very congested, dangerous intersection. Has there been given any thought to closing Maple or a partial closing of it so that there is not through traffic on Maple so that the pedestrian can easily circulate and do it in safety?
Yep. So as, as, uh, before we got to where we are today with this application, we looked at a number of options, particularly with Na- Maple Street, closing it, reversing directions one-way, uh, east or west. And, um, the issue is that diverts a lot of the other traffic to the north and really causes congestion there. And the queuing, uh, was unacceptable so that those options were taken off the table, but it was reviewed as part of the project.
Okay, um, I, I, just for the record, I think it's a, a very unfortunate situation of mixing pedestrians and vehicles. Um, the, uh, the loading dock, um, did you, uh, are you able to maneuver a, a large truck in that area? It looks pretty tight. Do that, do that back in from the street or can they actually turn around within the site?
So we looked at a couple of turning movements. We looked at trash, we looked at fire and we looked at, um, an SU-30 type. It's more of a box truck. So all of those are, are able to make that movement. We wouldn't anticipate, uh, normal tractor-trailers to use the loading dock. Other than, you know, maybe, uh, inventory, the first, you know, the first weeks of moving in furniture and that kind of stuff.
And then.
Certainly not routine.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then, um, I also noticed that on the, uh, I guess it's the, uh, upper median area. It looks like that, um, building, that part of the facade is going to cast a shadow into your, uh, closet area, your cafe, outdoor area. Have you done shadow studies and, um, determined what kind of, uh, condition that's going to be like in the, uh, wintertime when the angle of the sun is a lot lower?
Um, I'm not sure which location you were referring to. Are you talking about the, uh, the, the terrace on the north? Or are you talking about the, um, the locations north of the building, the outdoor spaces just on the edge of the library green?
Yes, the hardscape next to the light, the green space.
Got it. So we have done shadow studies similar to the, to the models that we're doing for daylight studies within the building. We've done shadow studies, uh, on the exterior of the building. So there are a bunch of places where the edge of the building, um, is on the north side or the outdoor spaces are on the north side. And then as you get beyond the building with the shadow studies and, you know, we could, um, show you some of those. But the, you get some, uh, suntraps specifically on the, the east side and then north of the, uh, the tower, um, so to speak, on the, on the building. That will be in shadow a portion of the day. But remember, this, this building is really, um, along Maple is due south, right? So you're going to get morning sun and, um, coming across for a good, you know, early part of the day on, on that space and in that terrace and on the spaces slightly north of the building. Um, and then as it moves to midday and the western, um, the evening, um, you're going to get shadow on there until it gets fully west. So, um, we have done some shadow studies there. I think anybody that's going to enjoy the outdoor spaces will pick them either for a shadow or sun or whatever they want to enjoy.
That's all the questions I have at the moment. Thank you.
So, um, before you go to other questions, I wanted to clarify John's question about bathrooms. And, um, I misspoke, the, the bathrooms on the first floor are gender-specific near the auditorium, bathrooms in the rest of the facility and on the second floor. We've got single unisex bathrooms throughout in the rest of the building. So up by the teen area, we have, you know, we have, uh, four of those. And then in the staff area, we have a number of bathrooms as well. So those are, those are unisex. I just wanted to clarify that.
Um, I have a quick question. I just want to say, I think this presentation is beautiful. I think the new library looks amazing. Um, my only question would be for the children's garden on South Avenue and Maple. Is there a wall around that and how high is that wall?
So, um, if I were to show you a section through the children's garden, so the finished floor relative to Maple and south is actually lower. And so when you come out of the children's library, you are actually in a somewhat private space. The stone wall along Maple is only, um, 30 inches, I think. But in fact, it's down, um, I don't remember the exact numbers, but down probably another foot and a half or two feet. So in fact, you get a private little garden area, you know, with trees that are scaled for children.
So the, the, the ground of the children's garden is higher up than Maple Street?
The ground of the children's garden is actually lower than Maple. And the grade butts into the wall. So the wall is exposed a short distance on the Maple Street side and then longer inside in the children's garden.
So it's lower than?
It's, it's lower than the street, yes. That wall is a retaining wall.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is John Chris picking up on, uh, Commissioner Tescornius' comment on the wall regarding the children's garden. Children tend to like to climb on things and I'm thinking of climbing on a wall and you need a road. I'm thinking of safety issues and how you're thinking about those?
Yeah.
It's, it's a very good question. You know, we talked about that a lot with the library and Lisa may want to, want to weigh in on that. Uh, there are some plantings along the edge. So the spaces for the children to be and to gather are really paths within the middle and for seating areas. Um, so, uh, children, you're absolutely right. Every kid likes to climb. Um, uh, but the purpose of that garden really is to have, you know, a private little enclave. And, um, I'll let Lisa address staff-wise how they may deal with that.
Thank you, Mark. So, um, yes, you're right, John. And in fact, we brought the children's library team into all of the discussions. Uh, the design of that children's garden was, uh, some of the longest planning time that we've had. The meetings were some of the longer planning times, uh, for exactly. The meetings were some of the longer planning times uh for exactly that reason. Our um, our children's specialists are have expertise in early childhood and child development and education, as well as being librarian. And we went through loads of iterations to make sure that we were designing a space that was inherently both nurturing and a rich learning environment, but as safe as it could be. But it's important to note that the there's not a way into this space for a ch- a small child without an adult. So that space would be supervised either by a child with a parent or caregiver, or it would be active library programming with with both parents and librarians supervising the activity. But Mark's quite right, the path construction and the entire sort of inside-out way that the paths go around and the play areas are are centralized, all came out of some really great creative tension between the design team and the librarians, making sure that this was both an enriching and safe place for kids to be.
I just think that the wall maybe should be a little higher, because if a child sees someone walking down Main Street or South Avenue, walking their dog or whatever, the child's going to be interested and go to the street, which is not what we want. If that wall's a little higher, they might not be able to see that.
So I I think, and Mark, Mark is gonna, or somebody else is going to be able to talk to us more. I don't know if our, um, if Sarah's on the call, actually, from the landscape architects, but um, it's sunken. So right, so the 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 wall is up higher, and then but so e- even though it's a thirty-inch wall, that there is earth down below, right, Mark, am I getting that right? So it's.
Right, yeah, you're absolutely correct. So the so the wall, um, as I said, the wall on the Maple Street side is thirty inches. The 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 children's garden is down um another uh two feet, I believe, from the grade. So in fact, the wall is four and a half feet tall from the inside of the garden.
Okay. Thank you.
And I I need to check the dimensions to clarify, but I do know that it is in that range.
I had a question on further runs, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, you know, that's a a very busy area. For the uh impacts to to that traffic and pedestrian movement is going to be construction. Um, I understand you do have a construction manager on board. Can you share with us uh the staging plans uh and give us a better idea? Maybe tonight isn't the time to do it, but I think we need to understand uh where the construction trailer is going to be, how how the supplies is going to arrive at the site. You know, what is the impact to the community because of construction?
We we can certainly um provide that uh and maybe Mark can start to address it. But if you would like, we can also do a more detailed uh presentation of of that aspect at the next hearing. But I'm happy, Mark, if you want to take.
I I I think it makes more sense to do a detailed presentation at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that. We do have some diagrams that we can show you specifically of how uh the construction phasing is going to happen and the use um of the site and of uh the center school lot. And we can show you that um at the next hearing, if you'd like.
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. We.
You're welcome.
Your stone will be available for that the next hearing to who's the construction, who is the owner's rep on that, so.
This is John Chris again. In addition, as part of that um discussion of how the uh old building would be raised and the disposal of the uh of the building materials might be useful too, from um, as you mentioned, that sustainability is something that's important to the library. And really how those may be disposed of and any hazardous issues regarding some of those materials and so forth.
Uh, yes, I will certainly a- address that as well, and we're also hopeful that perhaps someone else will. We would be happy if they would remove it rather than raise it. That's always a goal, but and we stand ready to do either, and we'll explain how we could do both options.
Um, this is Krista Nielsen, I have a question regarding the text amendment. Um, I'm not usually a fan of what I'm calling project-specific zoning, which is zoning districts that are written to enable a specific project, which is what's happening here in this case. And in looking at the business A zone and the apartment zone, which this project falls in both of, um, they both allow quasi-public libraries already. And so I'm wondering if you can explain further why you think a new zoning district is necessary, as opposed to just making some minor modifications to the existing districts where this project would already be allowed by special permit?
Well, I I think that the the, as I had stated previously, the way in the discussions with the town staff and and the libraries program and and libraries in general, they're a dynamic uh uh entity, has changed a lot. I mean, if you thought even twenty years ago, but how how the public, a public library or an association of library was handling itself or presenting programs, it's very different today. And we imagine it's going to be very different down the road. We we think that the 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 site plan standards and the design standards are something that is more than just a tweak to the the two existing zones that we're talking about here, was something that should be incorporated for a library that lands here or any anywhere else in in the town that that meets these criteria. So it's it's not a, it's not uh what, you know, people fear of of a spot zone. It's really a design element that is, I think, uh useful, because it it's it's more expansive than what was considered just as a a tweak to those two zones that you're describing.
But I guess specifically, I mean, I looked at the coverage, the street fundage, the setbacks, the height. You're not that far off on most all of those things. I mean, the height, you've got a little bit of an issue, but um the floor area ratio, you're a little high. But I guess my question is, does this really merit an entirely new district, as opposed to taking what we already have and making that useful for a library where it's already allowed?
I think that, you know, I I may ask Mark to step in, because, you know, he has the one who's been, you know, handling and struggling with, you know, height and all of the elements you just mentioned, and why this is important from an a- aspect of a of a of a set of design standards, as opposed to, you know, adjustments to this, these other zones. But I think that 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 debate has occurred in the past, and I and and, you know, it's 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 a question that I think uh, it's not as easy as just saying, making those changes. And Mark, I think, well, we had discussions with like the height analysis, especially that was one aspect of it that you can comment on, and maybe others.
Yeah, so so I'll I'll weigh in. Um, uh, it's a, it is a very good question and a really important aspect of this site. One of the challenges, as you know, is that this site has really two zones, right? Has the business A zone on the north side, has the apartment zone on the south side. Each with different criteria for setback, for um coverage, um for um FAR, for building height, um, all of that, as well as continuous wall on the street. And so when we originally looked at the property, the challenge is, if you occupy the apartment zone, which we do, then um, the northern part of the site, which is the business A zone, you really can't um your your floor area ratio is over the the requirements for the apartment zone. But in fact, your property is much bigger. And so the discussion was, could you either combine the properties in one zone or the other? Or therefore, do an overlay zone in which you truly develop a unique uh zoning regulation specifically for that property? And uh, you know, that was really the challenge, quite honestly, um, for us, and that's what sparked some of the early discussions.
Okay, one last question, and then I'll yield um to someone else. I saw on the timeline for the project that in two thousand eleven, there was a submitted application to rezone the entire property to business A, and that it was withdrawn. Could you just explain why that didn't happen?
I don't um, I don't know, Mark may know the answer.
Three dates?
Yeah.
All of us on the project now, I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
Thank you. That that wasn't on.
So, yeah.
Through.
Correct, I I I've been working on the on the project for ten years, so it was just probably just before uh my time. Um, in fact, because I I was not aware of it. And the uh, the struggles of what I just talked about, about the two different zones are in fact very real on that site, so I I wasn't aware of that.
I I'm I'm going to make an educated guess, I think that was the time that a one of the uh previous additional properties was added, and the parking lot was built at about that time. And I wonder if it was connected to that, we'd have to dig in and find out what I don't think any of us here um knew about that until you just said it.
Okay, thank you.
If do you want to go ahead, or?
Go ahead, Mr. Bash.
Okay, uh, hi, everyone, I'm James Bash. Um, thank you for the presentation, it's it's very clear that there would be um a huge amount of benefits to the to the town from this project. Um, and you discuss many aspects that comport with the P O C D. I wanted to get your view on some, on one area where there might be inconsistencies in some people's eyes with the P O C D, and that's regarding uh the stated guiding philosophy, stated guiding philosophy of the P O C D, which is to balance um preservation and development. And often those two two words are going to be in conflict with each other in some projects, and possibly in this project as well. And I'm specific, speaking specifically about the um the plans for the nineteen thirteen library, the demolition of the nineteen thirteen library, where um, you know, throughout the P O C D, we have uh words like um maintaining a sense of place and character. That it's our responsibility to preserve structures that have historical import. And we've had an inordinate amount of letters on both sides, but many letters saying that uh when they think of the nineteen thirteen library, they indelibly in their mind or in their experience connected with the town, reinforcing that sense of of character and place. So i- in that aspect, um, I'm hoping you could speak to, how does the dem- the potential demolition of the nineteen thirteen library um comport with that stated guided philosophy of a balance, a true balance of preservation and development? Thank you.
I thank you, it is a a very good question, and one that we are obviously aware of. And I'm going to let Lisa speak again to the 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 genesis of the new building and and why there was a a switch, because frankly, and when the library was first considering, you know, adapting and moving forward, the nineteen thirteen building was in the plans, so to speak, to try to figure out a way to do it. But the so I think we went through the balancing exercise. But as as uh Lisa had stated in her testimony earlier, uh, this is an association library, meaning it's not part of the town, it's a, it's a private, not-for-profit corporation and uh and and an institution that is the actual owner of the land. And uh, the the nineteen thirteen building uh is a wonderful-looking building, and it's a, it it's certainly many people have, of course, viewed it as worthy of preservation. And if there were a way to do it, uh, I think the the library that that made economic sense and and had a utilitarian purpose as well for the library, we we would be right there. But I I think that we've been through this exercise, and unfortunately, that's that's the problem. And I think maybe Lisa can expand on it if she needs to, that we 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 did that effort, we undertook that effort. And uh, you weigh that in the balance with all the other really good things we can do. If that building is uh removed or raised, as the case may be, then we have other benefits that are equally important that are in uh the plan of conservation and development. So Lisa, do you have, want to add anything to that?
I don't think I have, between what I said earlier and and the timeline that I sent through, and what you've just said now, Brian, I I don't have anything more to add to that. There were, there were twelve iterations that tried to incorporate um the facade into the building. When we acquired that last piece of land, it gave us a site that enabled us to get all of the priorities uh that we were looking for, apart from that one. And trade-offs, ha- you know, y- you make trade-offs. This is a building that's going to be funded seventy-five percent in the end by the community through philanthropy. And we're extraordinarily mindful of budget as well. And um, the green, I think, is such an amazing part of this project. That, along with the costs, um, it it's a matter of trade-offs to get the best project we can for the community.
Okay, and one more question, if I could. Has the, has there been any thought uh around um for the contemplated uh private park or town green? Um, whether or not it would be deed restricted to preclude uh future sale without conditions is I know it's probably preliminary, but has there been any thought, Mr. Smith, regarding that?
Oh, that there have been discussions, but I think that's really something that is with it's really a question for the library itself. I've never, I'm not in a position to answer that for you tonight, so um, but I I don't know if Lisa has any more insights right now.
My my understanding was that the the library zone went some way towards giving that very protection.
That's true, that that's, in fact, that that is the the one point I should have made is zone prevents that from happening, so it's in the zone, so.
Okay, could you elaborate on that a little more, sorry?
Sure. I mean, it it, the library's own only allows, it it, you know, there's a special permit, and it allows only as an accessory use of private park. But it does not allow other uses that, you know, other than a library in that area. So that you can't come in and say, okay, now we're going to put in a retail, you know, big box in that area instead, or some other uh use that would be inconsistent. So it's it's really, the the private park is an accessory use, it's only for, it like that's it's the library zone, so it's only for a library use. So that would be how you would prevent the other types of users from coming in.
Right, thank you.
I mean, a quick question on the concern about Maple Street, and it's been discussed. Was there any thought ever given to some kind of an overpass over Maple Street from the parking into the second level, perhaps, of the library, where a lot of library functions uh will exist?
I have to defer to Mark and or Chris on that.
Um, so uh, Chris, you can talk about this a little bit maybe, but um, it that that was never uh explored, in part because of uh the complication with um the development of the structure on two sides of the street. But then the um, the way in which you would enter into the building as well. So um, we did, we did not explore that. You really need an elevator um on two sides, um, and a fairly large structure to get across, so um, we did not look at that.
Well, the second question would be, the South School parking area is used for a farmer's market in the summer weekends. What does that do to the parking availability, or is there, does the farmer's market go away?
I can answer that. In in the agreement that we recently made with the uh Parking Commission and the uh Board of Selectmen, we heard that there was already a plan in place for the farmer's market to move. It'll evidently, I don't know where it's moving to, but I understand that it's it's already, there's already a plan in place for it to move.
Dick, the um, it's John Goodwin. Um, Dick, the last I heard was it was contemplated that it would be in the railroad lot. Dick, the it's John Goodwin, Dick, the last I heard was it was contemplated that it would be in the railroad lot.
Okay. I mean, the lumberyard.
Yeah, lumberyard, yeah, yep.
Okay, and one final question, and it goes back to the 1913 architecture. I'm wondering if there is any way to not a facade, but just some elements of the 1913, like just the almost just the entryway to have it incorporated to sort of I don't mean to say throw a bone to those who very much want to retain 1913, but sort of give a little bit of recognition to its existence.
So Mark can speak about this more, but we are waiting, we have made an offer officially to the Preservation Alliance to allow them to remove that structure if they want to, that offer still stands, however, if they retain the same position they're in now of saying no, then we have discussed repurposing those stones in the new perimeter wall at Cherry Street and possibly using some of the stones in the fireplace.
That's correct, and as far as integrating it into the building, as Lisa said, we did look at a lot of different ways and a lot of options for doing that, we had a workshop with over 40 people from town, I think 10 years ago, looking at options for that, we looked at a lot of iterations of ways in which you could either incorporate it or portions of it, and in the end, people agreed that that, in fact, did not make sense. But I understand now there may be, you know, a sentiment in a different way to to think about that. But it would be challenging to to include elements of the building within this building.
Probably drive an architect crazy to somehow mix the old with the new.
We had a scheme for doing that. We we absolutely did. It it was rejected, it was it was for a number of reasons.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, this is Dan Radman. I noticed there is no basement effectively as part of your current plan. Actually, I take that back, there's a partial basement underneath the conference center. You you previously had a full parking structure below the building, approximately 80 or 85 spots down there. Now that is all shifting over to the Center Street lot where you're taking up 76 of the spots. Excluding the discussion about the farmer's market, I'm just having a hard time understanding how in the previous scheme, you made the effort to include onsite parking without affecting the Center Street lot, because that lot is used by during the week by people that work in town and that come to shop in town. And now you're basically taking over 44% of those spots for use by the library. How do you reconcile the two solutions?
I think that
Chris, you want to you want to talk about that?
And address that.
Yeah, I think the there was a few conditions with the underground parking, one was the cost related to it and and groundwater and some other things to contend with. The the approach of the garage was much closer to the intersection, today we have really a mid-block in and out, which is much better from a traffic flow. And also just in terms of circulation with the high turnover or or many high turnover spots, you know, for people coming in, dropping off, picking up. The garage scenario didn't really quite work, because you've got to really enter the garage, hopefully find a spot, if you can't find a spot, you've got to then get out and go somewhere else, and it was, so it was a number of reasons why the underground parking went away.
I I want to, if if I may, just talk for a moment about that, though, too. We as we designed the building, we went through a series of iterations for the building, some of which were driven by value engineering, so in other words, we had to shrink the building several times over the course of the design. What happens is the ways in which we had to shrink the building also shrunk the footprint of the basement, and therefore, the original 85 spaces became less and less and more constricted, and in fact, more challenging in terms of the cost per space for the development of the lot. And so that did drive part of the decision, so the question was, do we extend out under the green in order to be able to do the parking, so logistically, that is a problem, but also you have the existing building there, and so you've got a footprint of an existing building, so if you want to save that while you have the new building built rather than moving somewhere else, there are a host of challenges with being able to develop effectively the underground parking under the building as you squeeze it tighter and tighter.
Additionally, of course, there's the fact that our the traffic studies that were done gave an incredibly poor grade for the traffic conditions that entering and exiting our original solution would have, so those the original solution have would have people coming in and out on Main Street, and the traffic conditions that that would create, both backing up down Main Street and towards the light, as well as a variety of other options that we looked at with entrance and egress on either South or on Cherry, all created unacceptable traffic conditions at the state-controlled lights. And that was, in fact, the first reason that we started looking at other alternatives before we ever got to even the other ones that Chris and Mark had just said. But the very first thing was that we had failing grades on the traffic condition, we are less than a block from two lights controlled by the state, and the incline on Maple Street precluded an egress coming out on that side, so the only we the other three sides were the only sides we could have entrance and egress, even if one was on one street and one on another, all of them were less than half a block from the lights.
Understood, so the the traffic being one of the factors for the modification and elimination of that lower-level parking, and then budget being the other, if I can ask, where I believe your previous with the parking structure under the earlier plan from a year or two ago, where were you with that budget at that time, and where are you currently with your budget?
You're on mute, Lisa.
And I think, I mean, as you know, Dan, doing a project of this size, you you it's iterative, right, so a budget starts to form as you get close to putting out your bids and getting a G M P, we're not there yet, so what we had before were estimates, not budgets.
The re- the reason I ask is it is obviously there was a a value engineering decision to eliminate the lower-level parking, that was a large component of it, and with with as much vested interest that the town has in terms of the town's contributions and the the residents' contributions towards the success of this project and funding a good portion of it, I think it would be worthwhile to know what the what the savings, what what potential savings are being realized as part of this design modification.
And somebody else can jump in here, but I I don't think we can answer that in a meaningful way because because we we eliminated that due to the traffic concerns before they were those options were fully costed out. We went back later as part of a comprehensive exercise when we started talking to town, and at the request of town, we did the exercise of exploring nine different options for parking under the building, and we costed them out on a on a per-cost basis, but we had already realized before we did that that those options weren't going to work, so we had been moving forward with without those, so I don't think we can speak about a savings being made because the plans had already, we had already learned that the parking underneath wasn't going to work because of traffic concerns before those other decisions.
Right, Lisa, I'll just I'll just touch on that a little bit, because and you said it well before, but I just want to reiterate that we are bound by Maple, Main, Cherry, and South, right? And in each of those conditions, you have traffic congestion, certainly on Cherry, certainly on South as it approaches each of the corners. On Main, you have parallel parking that comes down southbound, and our drive, our entry drive, was near the corner of Main and Maple. And the ability, because of the existing building, and then the that location wasn't given, and the challenges, as Chris noted and as Lisa noted, are are quite evident and and challenging to be able to make that intersection and that turning circulation work, so whether it's 85 spaces or 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 65, it's a small percentage people would come in, turn around, come back out, and the congestion on Main Street is considerable.
No, understood, I I guess I just I find it curious that you would have knowing the the constraints and difficulties and the sort of the failing grade on the on the traffic studies associated with the previous scheme, why it would have, why you would have pursued that previous scheme to the point you would have knowing that, I just but with that said, I I'm still going back to the Center Street lot, right? Currently, there's 172 spaces there. The plan as you've presented doesn't look to expand that lot in terms of parking count, but rather divide the lot into 76 dedicated spots for the library and the balance of 96 spots with a new entrance for public parking. Now, all of you on on the library side and everyone probably on the call and in the room know the difficulties outside of the COVID era we're living in, the parking difficulties that this town has, and that lot was always used significantly, regardless of farmer's market or not. So, knowing that you're now going to be taking the parking load from the existing library of Ballpark, what's what's the existing parking count, 60 or 70 spots? Something like that?
60.
Sorry?
63.
63, so you're eliminating 63 lots on the on the library lot and shifting that over to the new 76 spots, but you're taking effectively, you're taking 76 spots away from town parking, from from, you know, business parking, from the Center Street lot as it exists now, why wouldn't you modify the Center Street lot to include additional capacity while you're doing this?
So so can I speak to that? So I guess, yeah, first thing is, I think there is a great body of evidence that said before COVID that parking lot was approximately 66% used on an average day, 33% unused. The Parking Commission and Town have been working to try to get people to park in that lot for years, COVID notwithstanding. At the moment, there's currently a new plan in place that's made it free to try to further encourage people to park over there, although well over 200 permits have been sold for free over there. There are currently today 107 empty spots, people are still not going over there, even though it's for free. It's a decades-old problem, that lot was never being used as well as it should be, and I think there is plenty of evidence from the Parking Commission and other places in town. I was one of the people that paid for a parking spot over there for the last seven years and can attest to that emptiness. That's one piece, the other piece is, we have agreed to enlarge that parking lot in in partnership with Town, we've already said we do that, that's absolutely part of the plan. When we came to an agreement with the Parking Commission and the Board of Selectmen, that was part of the agreement that we would with them after occupancy, once we understood what the capacity issues may be, we would, in collaboration at our cost, enlarge that so that it makes sense for what the demand is.
Gotcha, thank you, that helps.
And I, John Goodwin speaking, I believe, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, one year from the C O, a study will be done to determine whether we need to add faces to the to the lot.
That, yeah, one year from the the C O is is what we've got in the M O U. The M O U is still not a thing, it's still obviously working its way through town, but that is what is in that document.
Just do sorry, a couple more questions, the cafe, you're going to have a fully functioning cafe on the ground floor. There doesn't appear to be any support or back of house for that cafe, storage, refrigeration, trash room, trash enclosures, all the things that are going to be necessary if you're going to be serving and and moving food through there.
Yeah, so I don't know what you're thinking of with fully functioning, I'm not sure where that's written, but it's more coffee and pre-prepared foods, we are imagining that it is a local independent establishment here in town that would have a second site at the library that any foods would be prepared off-site, and that what's being prepared at the library is coffee and drinks.
Gotcha. Another item I have is on the second level, the clear story effectively of the second level, there isn't obviously a, the majority of the facade elements on the second level are glass, clear glass, floor-to-ceiling. Is there going to be any strategy in place for light bleed at night when you're going to have this you know, new building, second story kind of glowing, all illuminated at night, creating a whole different aesthetic to that part of town? Because this will be a very prominent element in that part of town. Is there a concern there, is there going to be dimming, is there going to be shades, is what's going to be happening there?
Yeah, so that's that's a great question, and we've looked pretty carefully both at the the lighting, but also on the the heat gain on that on that south and west side. We do have shades on there, we do have ceramic frit, which will filter the light both coming in and coming out. We're also careful about the ways in which we are lighting the interior so that there is some uplight in the space and downlight in the space, but the 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 lighting, the outfall from the building is carefully designed, we understand, though, that from the corner as you approach, it will be it will be brightly lit, very different than it is today, however, there are trees along Maple Street and on the edge of South, and those trees are meant to be both to provide shading and dapple light to the building, but also use outward and lighting outward as well.
Last
The other, sorry, the one other point I'll make is that we've looked really carefully at the window-to-wall ratio, which is a critical aspect of sustainability, and we do have a series of spandrel glass bands on the building, both And we do have a series of spandrel glass bands on the building, both vertically and horizontally um on the corner. So uh there is some elements of the building. It won't be complete clear glass all the way around that corner.
Gotcha. Um one final question, um the solar panels. Um how, I mean, they're, in the renderings, they're pretty visible. Um especially when looking at it from either uh going northbound on Main Street or northbound on South Avenue. Um are they, is, is there any way to screen those? I mean, they're obviously solar panels and not the most attractive element of a building, but um or is there a, a specific way these are being designed? I realize these are just, you know, um renderings for the presentation, but is there a a certain way they're being handled that it'll be, you know, aesthetically appropriate or aesthetically appealing?
Yeah, so the way that, the way that we have designed the building right now. Um and I should just clarify that the solar panels, we're still exploring the options for um those on the roof. However, they will be pulled back from the edge. So if you think about the, the detail and the profile that we showed, we've got a large overhang that's very thin. And then at, at the building edge, it steps up in the insulation. And then the solar panels will be set back from the edge. Cast slightly to the south so that they're south-facing for the best advantage. Um so visibility frankly, from the street and from um almost anywhere will not be um significant on the upper part of the roof. However, one other thing that's, I think, important, and we are thinking about this in the design, is to be able to celebrate in some way uh renewable energy. And so I think if done right and careful in the design, they can be an aspect that people really appreciate.
What about um, what about perimeter lighting? Um light poles? Um you know, uh bollards, uh walkway lighting, what's, how's that being handled? Maybe I should look at a specific package or sheet or um light study that you might have.
Yeah, we do, we, yeah, we do have, we do have a sheet in our submission. Um so along the walkways, uh we do have a series of light bollards. Um along the edges, uh along the property, streetlights uh are there. Everything is um night sky um uh considered. So it's, it's uh careful, carefully shielded. We don't have any uplights um into trees or anything else. Um so uh the light levels are really carefully calculated to the walkways, to the terraces, to the entry areas. Um and then um really carefully analyzed along the edge of the property. So there's no light outfall uh along the edges.
Yeah, it looks like it, looks like it drops to below one foot handle along the perimeter.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, um, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jean Grace Lucky, I, I just have a couple of questions. Uh one, I think Kent made a good point when he was concerned with a mix of cars and maybe people in wheelchairs. But I don't think, and I'm, I'm wrong, because right now we're all picturing the parking lot the way it is. But what is actually the distance between the building and the street?
So the building, you mean on Maple Street?
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, our, our setback, um I'd have to look at a drawing again to clarify, but our, actually I have a drawing set right in front of me here. Um so our setback um along Maple Street. Apologies. Um. Sorry, I don't, Chris, do you have that on your uh?
Are you looking for the setback from the property line to the building?
Yeah, on, on uh Maple.
Or how far would it take you to get to, long would it take you to the sidewalk? What, what is the distance there?
From.
Um so it is, it is twenty, twenty-six, uh twenty-six feet from the sidewalk to the face of the building along Maple Street.
Okay, and where, where a handicapped person would cross? Is everybody's about the same here?
Yeah, so from the entry, um the uh, the building edge. So we have a terrace, um entry terrace that extends out to the sidewalk along Maple. Um but from the building to the edge of the sidewalk is twenty-six feet.
Okay, so.
That terrace extends.
Excuse me, go ahead.
The terrace extends all the way out to the sidewalk. So anybody coming across from Center School Lot arrives at the entry terrace right at the edge of the sidewalk.
Okay, so.
And then right into the building.
They're going straight from, from sidewalk to sidewalk essentially, once they get across this, the street. Um so they, there is no mixture then, because there's no parking there. It's only a drop-off area. And the drop-off area, I assume, will not have anything to do with the sidewalk we're talking about. So it will already be separated. Is that correct?
Well, in fact, the uh, the drop-off area is even closer to the building. Um so the drop-off is on the right side off of Maple. So in fact, that is um probably within ten feet of the building face.
Uh okay, thank you. Uh now, now the question, if I may, the uh, the one thing we hear all the time is there's plenty, is, is everybody hearing that same noise?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jane, I'm sorry, hold on a second. Can, if somebody has, we've been hearing noise periodically, phone noise, some type of noise. Can everybody mute, please, who is not speaking? Thank you. Sorry, Jane.
We, we hear in, in all the, a lot of the things we read, this is, well, nobody should get excited. There's plenty of, there's plenty of space for both of these buildings. And obviously you have a rationale for not having it. Can you defend that a little bit right now? Why, why your green space needs to be so large and, and without the nineteen thirteen building?
So.
I'm sorry, I, go ahead, Lisa.
I, I just wondered if maybe Paul would like to, to speak with me. Um I think there were the issues that I mentioned in the beginning, but also where that building sits in the middle of the lawn completely bifurcates that space. So the idea of a green that would be suitable for performance space is absolutely impossible with that building sitting in the middle. Not to mention the contours of the space um that would, would not allow for any sort of useful public performance or large group gatherings on that space if the building were there. Paul, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I did a um, I did a Google map uh drawing of, uh and measurement uh with their measuring tool to see how big Christine's garden is and how big the green would be if the nineteen thirteen and nineteen thirty-six building were left in place. And it, it, it appears that it's approximately about half the size of Christine's garden as opposed to the way the current green has uh, the, the way it is in our plan, in our application, where I believe it's, it's significantly larger than Christine's garden. Um and, and so you can gauge it by that, by that. I think people, most people can get a feeling of how big Christine's garden is. It feels a little bit tight. The proposed green would be uh much more ample. But um if we were to try to squeeze something in behind the nineteen thirty-six, nineteen thirteen building, as some have suggested, it would just be just prohibitive uh from a, from a space perspective. You just really couldn't have any, you, you wouldn't have many programs being able to go on there.
Thank you. Uh I have one last question. I guess it's really more of a comment than a question. I've spent a lot of time with the uh brilliant of conservation and development. Uh my least the last two, and I think maybe the third, there was a third one involved. But uh I think every time we come up with a large project like this, especially where conservation is, is involved, we come up with the same, against the same thing, and it is a matter of balance. You can go, the library can go to the P O C D and find some things that will suit them. The people for the, in favor of nineteen thirteen will find something to suit them. And it comes back to us to decide that what the balance should be in this situation, which is not always easy.
Mr. Herring, did you have any questions?
I had, um, thank you, Chairman. I had a question just about the, the use of the, the lawn after hours. So um, you know, with regard to it being a town green and town park, just wanted to understand, is there a, is there a concern? Or is there, you know, a desire with the lighting to have it used by um, you know, residents for strolls at night? And I just wanted to make sure, I understood, access to the park, is it, is it closed at dusk? Is it um restricted? What's the approach there?
Just as, as the library property tonight is not restricted to public access, I would assume nor will it be in the future. Um I, I, there, there's no, there's no mechanism for excluding people particularly. I can't imagine on what grounds we would exclude anyone from, from the outdoors.
Okay, no, I mean, I, you know, Waveney, for example, closes at dusk. So I just wasn't sure um if you had a, a, a directive to go that direction.
So the library is open until, until eight o'clock um four nights a week. And often on the weekends, it's open until later in the evening. Um so we, we are open till well past dark um for half the year. So the green would also be open. I, I, yeah.
Okay, fantastic. It, it's just, it's nice to know that. And in combination with your lighting plan that I just looked at, it's nice, it seems like a nice amenity uh for townspeople um for that, for that purpose. So I wanted to clarify that. And then on, on that, on the concession, there would just be a concession inside, but no concession outside. As I understand it, I know that some of our other town facilities, whether it be Mead Park or other locations, have benefited from having concessions to activate those spaces, whether it be coffe, as you suggest, or other things like that to draw people in. Do you foresee a, a um, the concession being an outdoor concession or strictly inside?
Only to, only to the extent that I manage, I imagine people might carry their coffees outside from inside to outside, but I, I can't imagine, no, a, a separate outdoor concession.
Okay, um and then it, two other points. Um one, with regard to, you know, uh Mr. Edman's comments about the savings of the savings of the, the, the lack of basement, the lack of, of cement, you know, required for an underground basement. With, with Center Lot, having served on the, the Parking Commission previously, I'm familiar with the, the, the under-usage, um Miss, Miss Oldman. So I'm, I, I heed your points on that perspective. And I, I like the notion of reviewing post a year. But, you know, one concept that, that comes to mind, because we've explored it with the Locust Street Lot, is the notion of a dual-decked, uh dual-entry scenario. And given the change of grade, you know, Main Street is at a, a significantly lower, lower grade than South. And so perhaps, you know, Locust was a four-and-a-half million dollar price tag to deck that. So in theory, um if demand sufficed, you could potentially deck center such to have a, a lower entrance on Main and a, or higher entrance on South. Um that way you, you eliminate the need for ramps, uh which take up a lot of space. And um you could build it into hillside. So from a, from a viewpoint, it doesn't really destroy a lot of value. And while decked parking is in order, enorm- enormously expensive, it, it's less expensive when you don't have a building above it. So that, that could be something to consider.
So, so obviously we still, we, we will never be the owners of that parking lot. So that, that's, uh I think two things to point out there. One, uh Town owns that lot, and so whatever we do will be in collaboration with the Town itself. And two, um we, we've agreed a maximum value to our contribution to that, um which I don't know if it gets us to deck parking. Should there ever be the demand, but that's certainly something we, we have um signed up to be partners with Town on whatever happens there in terms of our responsibility. So um.
What, what is the maximum value? Is that, is there, is there a price per, per, per spot? Like ten thousand dollars per spot that you've agreed to kind of contribute, or is there a, a note number?
There isn't, there is a number in that MOU. Um and right at the moment, I don't have that to hand. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll look it up. And then my last question, thank you. Um those are great answers, and I appreciate that. My last question was just on the, on the air-to-air um lead approach for the electric pursuit. Um air-to-air is less effective than air-to-water uh from a heat pump perspective. Um so was, was air-to-water heat pump explored, i.e. geothermal? And I know that obviously adds cost.
Yeah, so um, yeah, we did, we did look at that as an option. And certainly from a uh, from a sustainability standpoint, um geothermal systems, we've used them a lot in buildings. Um and they are wonderful. Um they, they do have a large first cost. And so, you know, that was one of the options uh that we explored as a system. Um if uh, it's, it's really just a, a first cost versus payback. And the analysis in the end, from a uh cost-benefit standpoint, uh air-to-air was the best option.
Thank you.
Yep.
No questions for me.
Mr. Cassavant, did you have a question?
Yeah, several quick questions. Um first, um you described, and I guess this is for Mark, the concept of an all-electric building. Will there be any backup systems? Um and how much of the building will actually be powered by the solar panels? And then the second question is really for Lisa, which is, there's been a great deal of discussion tonight about cost alternatives and, and I, I understand there is no G M P contract done yet. But what is the current project cost and does that, eh, that you're estimating? And does that include any basis for the land?
So first question, yes, it is an all-electric building. Um uh a, as far as a, a backup, are you talking about a generator or uh or a backup system, say, for gas or um something redundancy?
Uh I, I was particularly intrigued after all the time we spent as a town trying to deploy gas as a quote more efficient alternative. We've now turned electric and the, it, it's interesting to me as a concept. I spent a lot of time, by the way, working with solar buildings throughout New England. And I'm intrigued to hear we're going all-electric and then creating a quote green environment at the same time.
Yeah, so i- it's a, it's a very good question and a very good point. Oftentimes, the challenge of all-electric, depending on where you getting, you are getting your electricity from, um is not nearly as green as you would imagine, right? Um so the aspect, the ability to be able to marry uh renewable energy and solar panels and an all-electric building is really the direction that we were looking at and really the purpose. Percentage-wise of what we'll get out of the roof, um I would have to give back to you on that. But we do have a basic layout and a basic um output for the panels on the roof. That depends in part what direction we go uh with the use of those panels. Um, you know, whether it's uh, you know, a P P A or a direct purchase or what. Um that would, we'd have to explore that. And then that would in part determine um what type of panel we use and then the output efficacy. What type of panel we use and then the output efficacy of that panel. And therefore, what we get out of it for running the building, so, you know, I don't have a percentage right offhand.
As to the question of backup. We are in a spot where there is redundancy in the grid between the town hall and the police station. In the past ten years, the library has never lost power. We are the one place with power when, like, for example, last summer, ninety percent of the town was without electricity. We opened up and put power cords and extension cords. Out all over the lawn and a thousand people came and tapped into our Wi Fi and electricity for the few days when nobody else had electricity. So we're hopeful, obviously, we would do a further capital campaign to get a generator sometime after the fact if we feel we need one.
And my question about the current cost of the project?
Hall, I think, has the current numbers, but I think we're between thirty six and thirty eight million. Obviously, we're we're going out to bid just about now. We're still running an awful lot of contingencies in the plan. Clearly, if we don't end up needing those, the price, you know, that number will come down. If we need those contingencies, it'll be a bit higher, but it's in that thirty six to thirty eight range.
And and thank you, and one final question, last month at this hearing, we had an extensive discussion with a major not for profit in town. That had numerous events that were not, I'll call them, they're fundraising or or associated. Has any calculation of eligible revenues been done from the not for profit about its eligibility level? With respect to tonight's presentation, we've heard about a coffee shop, a potential teaching kitchen. And a potential event spaces and and in fact, the 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 risk of scorching the not for profit five oh one C three status?
Oh, wait a minute, I thought I knew where you were going, but now I'm afraid I haven't understood the question.
Okay, so so as a not for profit, there are limits on revenue generation and associated activities. Is there any plan? Because we've heard today about a bunch of, I'll call them ancillary to library, but not library specific activities. Has that been considered?
So you're asking, would would we trigger unintended business income?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's, we we currently, we currently get rental for our meeting rooms from for profit entities. But we give them for free to New Canaan nonprofit entities. The lease income from a cafe situation is is not likely that or the rental income of the auditorium. Neither of those are likely to get us to a point of of having U B T I that we need to be concerned about. Oh, would would it were so, I I don't think it's a risk.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, I I was wondering if I could go back and just answer Gene's earlier question about the green. Is that?
Yes.
So I just, I'll, I'll, I'll just read something out that was much more articulate than than me, my answer earlier. But it but it addresses the question in a few different ways. The original building as a small standalone on the library campus would contribute minimal interior space for library functions. Requiring all of its own services, including A D A bathrooms, that would extensively extensively reduce its limited usable footprint. Mechanical systems required for that freestanding building would be duplicative and because they're required at the other building as well. Freestanding annex would add considerably to the construction budget, require expanded staff and increase the operating costs going forward. Would also be challenging, given our plan to stay in place. Operating the current library throughout the entire construction program. Importantly, our design allows the library to remain open. Removal of the building, the original building will only take place after the new building is fully constructed. As designed, the green will accommodate educational programs, staged performances, in addition to passive recreation. The building would fall right in the middle of the green bifurcating it, leaving the outdoor space divided. Half behind the building and along the gas station and half along Main Street. The elevated existing grade surrounding the nineteen thirteen building would create a mound in the middle of the lawn, reducing the potential for larger outdoor gatherings. Providing another green space will serve as a pedestrian destination from the town center in keeping with our reputation as a walkable town. Changing the design at this time will result in a time consuming and costly redesign, not to mention that the result would be suboptimal. And inconsistent with the forward thinking and comprehensive design. So those are not my words, but I thought somebody else had done a better job than I had done earlier.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chris?
Yes, I'd like to chat about the landscaping plan for a minute.
We now have our landscaping, one of our landscape architects on the call.
Fine, I'm sure we'll want to follow up with the, I would like to follow up with the landscape architect perhaps at a at a future point, but. Just an observation, one or two observations. It was mentioned at the. Initial slide deck about the. Move removal of some current trees on Cherry Street and installation of some new trees that are close to the curb. With the sidewalk being between the wall. The curb to the trees to the sidewalk to the wall. With the trees closer to the roadway. I'm wondering about the survivability of these trees because you have snow being plowed onto them, which would be have salt and sand. Tends not to be, especially the salt, not real great for trees, and just wondering whether this may make those trees more vulnerable to. Early death or or injury and, you know, again, the sustainability of that type of planting installation. If you don't, if you don't know, we can follow up with the with your landscape architect.
She's here, Sarah's here.
Okay.
Hi, all, thanks for having me. So the red maples that we're showing on Cherry, we have had some internal discussions. Currently, we're showing them in beds of low growth sumac, which is a very salt tolerant. Ground cover, but we have had discussions about whether or not, because of the plowing, whether or not that planting. Around the red maples is the right choice. So I think we could continue to look at that more closely, but the red maples. While they are very close to the street edge, they are very. They are very stable street trees and can handle the sort of. Abuse that comes with being right on on a street edge.
Also went through. The planting guide in the in the application. And looked at, looked up some of the, a number of the plants, and while some are natives, some are native to the Americas, but not necessarily native to our area. And some are not natives. And so particularly with the focus on sustainability that the library is focusing on and appropriately so. I'm wondering why some of these non natives to our area are included. I see, I'm familiar with the eco type project that the Connecticut Northeast Organic Farming Association is pushing in order to. Focus on the reintroduction of truly native plants to our particular E P A zone, which I think is zone sixty five. And particularly those plants that may be under. Market stress or rarity that could be reintroduced, perhaps properly, and that are approved particularly important for native pollinators. And so I didn't notice a number of those there, such as Joe pie weed and milkweed, which is for monarch butterflies and beard tongue and so forth. Wondering if you could walk in a little bit about the concept of why some of these plants were chosen, particularly non natives.
So I believe we do have Joe pie weed in the.
I may have missed it, but.
But yeah, up at the terrace. But it's true, we have, so I did a sort of a percentage count, just because I wanted to understand. From our perspective, where we were landing with native and non native, but. With trees, we're at an eighty eight percent native. Shubs seventy six, and then with ground covers, we're at ninety one percent native. There's a number of flowering, the smaller trees, we have some magnolias and. Stewardia on site that we felt really lent the characteristics of those. Sort of, you could say ornamental, because of the flowering type, really lent themselves to the landscape while capturing mostly native. On the rest of the site. We are, we do have some other ground covers, the ground covers that are not native or taxes. That we're showing really as a sort of bank stabilizing plant that will provide an evergreen edge. So there's some characteristics of plants that we've chosen that. You know, we really felt it was worth it from a maintenance. And even though mostly non native plants. Are a low, end up being a relatively low maintenance plant. There were some trees and shrubs that came into the mix that we felt was worth worth the trade off. But I can certainly go through and highlight more for another meeting, you know, which, you know, that. What the reasons were and where they are on the plan, you know, the non natives versus the native species.
Could be helpful, you know, sometimes. Plants that are installed and say plants broadly, you know, any kind of, you know, shrub could be a tree, could be a low growth plant. Folks are used to sort of going to their go to plants, which may be non natives and don't tend to focus on some of the natives, which can function perfectly well. You know, eastern dogwoods are lovely trees that I have on my property, I think many people do and are certainly. You know, really earmark trees for for our area. You know, whether those can be substituted for magnolia, for example, and which which is a lovely tree also, but not native. So some of those choices would be useful, as well as their particular impact on pollinators and birds and other wildlife would be. Useful so we can understand the full impact of some of the choices the library is choosing to make.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple of questions from my end, Mr. Smith. So the the way we should interpret our decision making tree, the way I'm thinking about this is ultimately it's the overlay zone that governs. So we have a special permit and a site application, but if I'm a commissioner and I'm thinking about what ultimately governs this this application, I should focus on the overlay zone. Do you agree with that?
Yes, except the, that's correct, except to the extent that it does not apply, then you look at the underlying zones.
Okay, and given the discussion about the private park, why is it a private park? As says, a private park may be open for use by the general public, why why would we, why is that restriction in there?
It's a, well, I mean, the the library can choose not to close it, but it is a private property and some parks are, you know, can be fenced and then. You know, shield it off, that's not what the library's intent is, but that that's an option that should be, you know, one that the. It should be available, and then, of course, you know, you can ask the owner if that's what they intend to do when they come in.
Okay, and.
My understanding from the planner, when she was writing that, was that technically it had to be a private park because we are a private entity. We we couldn't call it a public park since we are. We are not the municipality.
Okay, when we get into deliberate or learn, maybe we can talk about that. And quasi public library, the facility that is either A, private nonprofit, or B, agency of the town of New Canaan. What's the thinking behind door number one and door number two?
Well, I'll take the first attempt at that, and then Lisa. Do it from the library perspective, I mean, those those are the two types, we're talking about a library zone. And those are the two types of libraries that are typically found is association libraries. And there are public libraries that are run by the town themselves, so that's really the distinction. But we didn't want to limit it to one or the other, because both are possible and both are found all throughout the state of Connecticut. Lisa, you might want to elaborate on that.
I I believe Anne, when she was working on the text, looked at previous documentation that had been lodged with town. Where town had called the library, a quasi public library in the past. And since town had used that name, that is why we use that name. And then she found the definition for it that is as you see before you. I guess. One reason we might keep it there or have it that way is that while we're a. Nonprofit association library today. At some future date, fifty years hence, perhaps this community will decide to do the library differently, and it would become a public library. If that were to happen, then you wouldn't need to make any change.
Okay, thank you, and. The the use of the auditorium, I'm just thinking about traffic and circulation. What, when do you think you're primarily using the auditorium and is it potentially at different hours when you anticipate other use of the library?
So I think we're going to use the auditorium all the time, but I think what you're talking about is the three hundred people at once use, which is, right? So as Mark showed us, that space can be divided in two with two hundred people at the front, one hundred at the back. And then the the teaching kitchen, the times when it would be maximum occupancy would be evenings, potentially on weekends. It's very unlikely that we would have programs during the day that would attract three hundred people. However, we do, for example, host the community foundation for their annual awards. And that's an event that has had in recent years to move to Norwalk. At an eleven o'clock in the morning function because there isn't a space in New Canaan. I'd like to think that we would go back to hosting them on a weekday at eleven o'clock in the morning for the community awards. So occasionally, I would see that it gets used at max capacity midweek, but typically, I think. Our use, our public programs would be in the evenings, typically, we start at seven and run to eight, eight thirty. Or else we have them Sunday afternoons or sometimes on Saturday afternoons.
Okay, great. I think what I'd like to do now, unless commissioners, you have other questions, I would, I've said this a few times, I'd I'd like to have Mike Galante speak to us. Mike has been involved since, I think, about June of last year. And Mike, if you can give us your thoughts. You know, where do we, what what do we, do we still need anything from the applicant, one? Two, is your thoughts on needed parking? Three, your thoughts on safety and circulation? And and well, safety having to do with A, circulation and B, specifically protecting, you know, the passageway across Maple Street.
Good evening, Mike Galante, and can you hear me, just want to make sure.
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you. I know it's a late hour, but I'll just spend a little bit of time, of course, I'm Mike Galante, Hottisty and Hanover, we were retained by the town last summer. To really be kind of a peer reviewer for this from a traffic and parking perspective. The first step last summer was to review a document that was, I think, a preliminary traffic study from the applicant. That was from actually from the fall of twenty eighteen, had traffic counts and data analyses. For existing in no built conditions, and then it stopped at that point because back in twenty eighteen, there really wasn't a. Final plan as far as what the new library would look like, size, parking, access and so on, so it stopped at that point. Back last fall, we spent probably more than a few months on parking, it started out with a garage underneath the building. There, I had concerns with that, the applicant's traffic consultant had concerns with that, and others had concerns as far as access to that garage. Internals, I had concerns with internal circulation. If there wasn't enough parking that drivers going in and coming out. That garage would have been used for drop off of, let's say, children. And just created, in my opinion, congestion and safety under the building. And just created, in my opinion, congestion and safety under the building that really wasn't, wasn't a great idea from many perspectives. And I think everyone kind of came online thinking the same thing. And then it moved to across the street as far as parking in the town parking lot, which is the center school parking lot. Our involvement more recently was, well, back in January, we, we came out with a parking assessment evaluation. The applicant came out with something around the same time. The numbers were fairly close as far as number of parking spaces needed in total. We recommended, Hodesy, myself, we recommended a hundred and two spaces. That was divided between seventy-six spaces in the parking lot across the street and twenty-six spaces over at St. AIDS, which was, I think you, that's there now and is used by library staff and that would remain in the future. There was an agreement or there's an agreement being worked on that requires the library to do a study a year from building the place and having a CO issued, which was mentioned a little while ago. And there'll be a parking study, which I actually provided some scope as far as what it should be as far as a parking study and actually traffic also. Because we are in a pandemic and right now doing traffic counts and parking counts last year, almost to the day, is not an option. And I'll get into that in a minute. But there is a possibility of more parkings needed when this facility is, let's say, approved, built and open and operating. The library has an obligation to add parking to the center school parking lot. So that, I just want to touch on that. I know that was mentioned before. But more recently, the applicant submitted a, a traffic report to the town and our office for review. We had some comments. They recently, about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, responded to those comments. And we actually came out with new comments early this morning, which the applicant has, and they will be responding to those comments. Now, before I get into some of those issues, just want to make the point, we're not finished with our review. The applicant's not finished with their final traffic report, so we don't have recommendations or findings at this point. So things such as safety with regard, with regard to crossing Maple Street, crosswalk, no crosswalk, signing, no signing, where handicap spaces are located. You know, I'm going to not really comment on, you know, what we think, what we might suggest a few weeks from now, for example. Because we're not finished and we're not, we're not looking at final traffic numbers from the applicant. And they've been very responsive. I just want to make that point. They've been very responsive to our comments. We're not here to criticize. We're here to have the best document, whether it's parking or traffic for the town and everyone to review and use. And hang on. Someone's looking for me. So just real quickly in my comments from today's letter, if you will, dated March thirtieth, which is a response or review of the responses from the applicant. One thing I just point out, and I think it's really been addressed in many ways, is the size of the proposed new library. I've heard different numbers. I believe it's forty thousand points to sixty-one feet. Mr. Chan, when you read tonight in the application, you said forty-two thousand square feet. In the traffic study from two weeks ago, it had, I think, fifty-two thousand square feet. And I, and they, whatever reason, that was the number used. And that's been revised back to the forty thousand and change, which matches the parking study provided by the applicant. So that's, they're consistent. I just mentioned that we want to make sure everyone, we had the right numbers as far as everyone, whether it's the architect, the, the traffic consultant and parking and so on, because in my opinion, from a traffic point of view or parking, it could change the numbers because the parking was based on square footage. And typically, traffic is based on square footage, although this was a little different. I'll touch on that in a moment. Back to the traffic counts the applicant did back in the fall of twenty eighteen, of course, there's a pandemic from the last year or so. So any new counts were not appropriate, especially when the library was closed. I'm sure most of the time it's okay to use data from twenty eighteen. The Connecticut DOT has standards for using traffic volumes from within the last five years. So the twenty eighteen data was expanded to a twenty twenty-three design year when this development would be built and fully occupied and in use. And that's perfectly fine. We're, we're using that. One thing that the traffic study didn't do, and there were reasons for it, they weren't planning on using a center street, center school parking lot. So they didn't count the center school parking lot driveway on Maple Street, for example, or the one from South Avenue into the parking lot. But they did do observations at the library driveway, which is nearby on Maple Street. And they limited those observations. And I use word observations because that's how they described it. They identified cars entering and exiting, not by turntable, but just simply entering and exiting for a one-hour period. And they used that, that data, which by the way, with the round numbers of about two hundred and thirty-five vehicles as the basis of future, existing and future library traffic. Then they used that same number for a Saturday midday condition. And I just raised the red flag, you know, do we know if the Saturday library traffic is the same as a Thursday afternoon library traffic? That, that's one of the questions in the letter from today, and I believe they, the library does have information to respond to that. And I, I believe we'll see that in the next updated traffic study. It was typically, you know, my first reaction is there's more traffic for a library on Saturday morning, but apparently this library is not, that's not necessarily the case. So that's why they're using the same volume weekday afternoon and Saturday, but they'll provide additional information and if we're comfortable, we'll, we'll go with that. They do say that they're increasing their library traffic by fifteen percent. They've done it in an interesting way because they assume their account accounted for someone pulling into the library back in twenty eighteen, not finding a parking space and coming back out and round, going around, going back in, and it happens to be about fifteen percent. The new building is about fifteen percent bigger than the existing building, so they're using the higher number and they're saying that basically increasing the traffic for library about, about fifteen percent. Not a typical way of doing it, but at the moment, we're accepting that and we've asked for additional information to support that. So at the moment, existing traffic conditions, we're comfortable with. The next step is, and then going through this, I know it's a late, late hour. And we can, I'm sure, talk about traffic for quite a while. A future background condition, they're using a design year of twenty twenty-three. They expand that data by adding traffic for, you know, the view, which was American apartments some years ago. Hang on. So we're, we're okay with that. They changed the view volumes a little bit and they're actually being a little bit more conservative as far as the volume, which is okay. So we're, we're okay with that. We did ask for in our last review letter to show us how they took the current library traffic out of the system and put it back in. And that step is necessary because the library traffic is not the same as far as where it's going today versus tomorrow, meaning it's going into the library, library parking lot today, it's going into the center school parking lot in the future. So you have to change the, where the traffic is going. So it's, it's a process. They've taken the traffic out and they put it back in and we're okay with that process. It's simply they're, they're showing it in graphic format as opposed to just saying they've done it. So we've asked for that. They've provided it. Site traffic, we've touched on. They, they really didn't do any Saturday counts or observations at the driveway. They did the certain traffic counts that they were into sections. So at the moment, we're just waiting for more, more information on that. Build volumes will potentially change a little bit, so we're just holding off on that, that section. The last point I want to bring up is very technical, really for traffic engineers. It's the capacity analyses and how you come up with the findings and the results, you know, levels of service and delay and so on. And I'll just touch on those. We passed this along today and I think they understand the comments. We had comments last time. They've addressed those and we have some additional comments. In some cases where they responded, we didn't necessarily agree. So we're just taking this through a process to get to a point where everyone's comfortable from a traffic perspective. Because our comments and changes do impact the results of the analysis, potentially impacts. And of course, the bottom line is always, do you need mitigation? So we're, we're getting to that point, but we're not there yet. And I'll just touch on the, the comments with capacity analyses. You may have heard traffic engineers talk about a synchro computer model. It's where you input all of the traffic data, details of each intersection. And you analyze it, in this case, existing no build and a build condition, the comparison of no build to build is really the impact of, in this case, a library with different traffic patterns. It's essentially the same traffic. One thing is when we do this, we typically take the, the study area intersections and do an overlay over an aerial photograph and that's done. So we make sure we have exact measurements. And what we've noticed is when you do that, it doesn't match the aerial underneath, and I would have to assume the aerial's correct. And their modeling is not. So again, it, to intersections, which in this case Cherry Street Intersections at South and Main are closer than they really are in the field. It affects the results of the analysis. So it's a technical comment that will be addressed, I'm sure. Another one is something called peak hour factors. A peak hour factor is, it's really a measurement of how the traffic arrives at an intersection over a one-hour period. It's, it sounds like a minor thing, but it, you know, the number is, the highest number is one as far as peak hour factor. One is simply the traffic evenly spread out over a one-hour period, which is not, doesn't typically happen. If you have something that's, let's say, point five, peak hour factor, that's typically in front of a school where everyone arrives at the same time, you know, just before the bell or dismissal. Langdon used approach peak, uh, peak hour factors. We typically use overall for the intersection. The approach analysis gives you a more critical or conservative result of an, of an answer. While we don't do it that way, and the book says you can, we do know from our discussions from Condat, not on this project, but for other projects that we submit, it's been agreed with them that we use the overall analysis, overall intersection peak hour factor. Again, it changes the results of the analysis, probably not much. So we have accepted their approach, which is the approach of peak hour factors. And when you compare it to their field data, which is the traffic count, some of them don't match. We think a couple are simply just typos, but others are, it's a different number and we can't find where the number comes from. So they're going to review that and they'll adjust their analysis and it'll change their results, maybe just a little, maybe a little bit more some locations, but we don't know the answer. Again, it affects the bottom line, which is levels of service and delay. Their analysis did not include pedestrian counts, which they do, they did the counts, but they didn't include it. And the reasoning for not including it was because, and this set signal is intersections, Cherry, was that there are exclusive pet phases, so there's no need to account for the pedestrians. We respectfully disagree because if there's a right turn or red permitted, that car's crossing that crosswalk, even though it's an exclusive pet phase. So we think it should be included. It may have just a minor impact on the results, but we, we feel it should be done that way. And we'll see if they, they come back with that, done that way. I only mentioned the most recent report didn't include tables three and four. We don't have it in our package and that has all the results in it. I'm sure we'll have it in the upcoming one. And one last comment on capacity analyses and all the details to go into that, which is really the, the heart of a traffic study. There's something called a time-space diagram, which is if you have two signalized intersections or multiple intersections, the time-space diagram from Condat in this case is telling us how the signalized intersections operate together, meaning how are they coordinated, which they are usually. At this moment, we don't know if there's a time-space diagram available. Langdon is checking with Condat to see if there is one. If there is one, they didn't, they didn't use one in their analysis, but if there is one, they'll modify their analysis. So at this point, we have not looked at the results of the analysis, what their levels of service are, what their vehicle delay is and so on, vehicle queuing. Because the numbers and the answers likely will change a little bit, maybe a little bit more in some cases. So that's why I said at the beginning of all this, we're not finished with our review and we're not finished to come to a point of finding the recommendations. That's the traffic part of it. As far as parking, we've chatted about that. Safety will be coming up with some suggestions and findings and regulations on, on Maple Street. We've had with staff, we've had some discussions on, you know, how do we treat Maple Street? We did talk about closing it. We did talk about making one way. We did talk about with, with Tiger Man, who I'm sure is on this call. We talked about, you know, he talked about moving Maple Street, for example, and making the parking lot right in front of the library. All of those ideas are all of that, those idea, ideas were discussed. But as Chris from Langdon mentioned before, making, closing Maple has a negative impact on Cherry Street. And the volume couldn't be handled on, on Cherry, those two traffic signals. So closing it really wasn't an option. Maple Street does function as, I'll call it a bypass or a shortcut, if you will. But we do need to address and focus on pedestrians crossing the street. And we'll have some suggestions on that. We've had some preliminary discussions, but nothing final at this point. Circulation within the school, I'm sorry, the center school parking lot. We will offer some suggestions on that as far as existing conditions with that parking lot. It's, I wouldn't call it a typical parking layout, has trees and large medians, but we'll make some suggestions on paper marking such as arrows and maybe some signing. The driveway location has been placed where you have maximum sight lines on, on Maple Street coming out. We've talked about moving the crosswalk from where it's shown on the architect's plan or the engineering plan for this. I prefer it to be closer to the intersection with the parking lot driveway. In that case, it wouldn't align with the entrance to the building and I understand why the architect has it there and the, and the engineer. So we, we're not finished yet, but we're getting to a point where hopefully the next submission of traffic to us, we can start drawing conclusions. And generally with that, and I can certainly answer questions. I'm trying to give you a big picture for the moment. But a lot of work's been going into this for a lot of months by certainly staff, the commission chairman and so on, to get to a point where we can come up with findings and recommendations from our perspective, back to the town and back to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Galante. Any questions for Mr. Galante? Sure, everybody's pretty exhausted at this point.
Yeah, not, not as exciting as the architectural plans.
I do have one question. Mr. Galante, could you, as Commissioner Chris, give an elevator pitch version of this? I'm looking for something short, sort of goes to your key conclusions.
Uh, as I said a little while ago, I don't have key conclusions yet because the analyses that were provided, we have questions on that change so many answers. So at this point, I know how these intersections operate. I've been, you know, in town for quite a while. I know this congestion on Cherry Street, for example. As far as conclusions, I need to probably hold off a couple of weeks.
So probably at our next commission meeting, you would have some more detailed conclusions for us.
Yeah, assuming I get back an updated report from Langdon and we turn it around and review it right away and get it back to the town. My hope is that we can do, I'm not sure when the next meeting is, but you know, my hope is that we would do that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'm not going to any question, just, you know, we're not ready to give answers just yet.
Okay. Mr. Smith and team, do we have any concluding remarks for this evening?
Mr. Chairman, oh, oops, trying to get my camera back. Mr. Chairman, I, we don't have any other closing remarks for this evening, other than we very much appreciate all the attention and that's been given to this by the commission as well as the, over a long period of time, the staff has done a remarkable job of working with us in trying to come up with the, the best plan that we can for the library and the community. I don't know if Lisa has any other closing remarks, but I, I did want to express our thanks to everybody here. And the, putting in all these volunteer hours is very much appreciated.
Thank you, Brian. No, all I wanted to say was to thank you all. I know it's a late night. I believe you have yet another agenda item. I'm so sorry. But thank you for your great questions. We look forward to next month and being able to continue to work with you to make sure that you're fully satisfied with our plan. And as I said, we've been doing this since eighteen seventy-seven and we look forward to doing it for another couple of hundred years. And we're certain that this plan is what's going to take the library forward for the community. And we're really pleased to be at this stage and getting your input and working with you to move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Oldham. So commissioners, one, in terms of follow-up items, further requests for information, things for the applicant to do, let Lynn know that, please. Second item is I apologize to the public, you know, my fears have been realized that we do need to move on. So I, I think what we should talk about is potentially having a special meeting. And, you know, the idea would be we would kick it off with probably the New Canaan Preservation Alliance and, and then anyone else from the public who would want to present. And then just another idea I had, I'm, I'm not positive it's a good idea or not. This is my mode of, you know, throwing out ideas sometimes is we could do a site visit. And as you commissioners know, that on a site visit, you're there with the applicant. You're allowed to ask the applicant questions just to get a better, you know, the ideas, if you wanted to get a better sense of, you know, specifically where the new project is, but also concerning, you know, the outlines where the new, where the, you know, the old Where the new project is, but also concerning, you know, the outlines where the new ca- where the, you know, the old. Uh, or the, the current library is situated. So think about whether or not that would be helpful or not. And, and let, let Lynn know your thoughts about that as well. Um, so any, anything else from anybody, commissioners? Okay, this hearing's continued. And we do have a little bit more work to do. I think it's time to make some decisions. It is. Looking for help. Okay, so item number three, four eighty, four eighty-seven West Road. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I move for approval.
Okay, reasons for approval, please, Claire.
Um, I believe we discussed this at the last meeting. The only thing that was pending was, um, the, the report from Wetlands. And we were able to get that tonight and that seemed to be okay. So I think this should be, um, okay for approval from us.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Krista seconds. Okay, take the roll. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jean Grislecki. It's Jean here. Lynn, have we lost Jean?
She was here.
Okay, well, I'm going to, uh, seat Mr. Cassavan for Mrs. Grislecki. So, Mr. Cassavan.
Muted.
You're on mute. Bart, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I vote yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, John, Chris?
Yes.
Krista Nielsen?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Claire Tescornia?
Yes.
Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Bill Williams?
Yes.
Right, motion carries. Okay, and then the other item. Is two nine, three, three ninety-four Main Street. Do I have motion for approval or denial?
I move you approve.
I have a, uh, reasons for approval, Mr. Chris.
Uh, I see this as enhancement to, uh, our facility. It will provide, um, better working space and working. Environment for, uh, the supervision as well as the various other employees in the site. Uh, also there will be a, uh, handicapped, uh, toilet available to everyone, including the general public. So I see that as enhancement. We will also have a facility that will be ADA compliant, which the current one isn't. So I see a number of benefits from this, uh, build. I would also note that, um, the town has indicated that it, it will be coordinating with the. New Canaan Beautification League regarding landscaping, the focus on native plantings, and I think that's very encouraging.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. Uh, do I have a second? Um, I saw Kent. So Kent seconds. Any discussion of the motion? Okay, that was what I, I call, I call it, I call the motion. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Uh, Mr. Cassavan, you'll be seated for this one as well. So, Mr. Cassavan?
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Mr. Tescornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, now we're into regular meeting mode. Uh, we still, we were in regular meeting policies. Um, item eleven, fifty Pine Street, David Rucci Lampard. Two, we authorized Asian Cross Realty Connecticut LLC, owners and contract purchaser in connection with special permits, site plan approval. Uh, request the commission extends that approvals for an additional year. Lynn, is this you or do we have Mr. Rucci present?
Uh, Mr. Rucci is present. If you want to hear from him, it's, um, the fifty Pine Street is the Bevel Sadlery. They got a special permit from this commission. Probably just before COVID hit and, um, they'd like to extend the time of that special permit. That's the sole request. But if you want to hear from Mr. Rucci, I can elevate them.
Pretty straightforward. Any commissioners want to hear from Mr. Rucci or you want to go with me? That's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward. Run with it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Dan, reasons for approval?
Uh, purely. Sir?
You could just do a straight vote. You don't, you, you don't need to state reasons.
Okay, great. In that case, John Goodwin, I vote yes.
Wait, I need a second.
I second.
Okay.
Sorry, it's late.
Claire seconds, okay. I still vote yes. Uh, Mr. Cassavan, you'll be seated again.
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Ms. Nielsen?
Yes.
Mr. Radman?
Yes.
Tescornia?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, great. Item number twelve, three sixty-five Luke's Wood Road, um, Grace. Uh, before we get going, I have a few comments on this. At our last meeting, a request was made on behalf of David Marquados and Jenner for Home to recuse myself. This is me, John Goodwin, speaking from participation in this application. They produced some emails out of old, at least thirteen hundred emails. And previous letters from neighbors councils, evidence of conflict. Um, other emails were also misinterpreted. Ironically, at least one of my emails was me expressing frustration. We were not responding quickly enough to Mr. Sherwood's client. Um, after reviewing the town attorneys and my own personal consideration, I stated last month, I acknowledge receipt of attorney Sutchen's emails. And I state for the record or assertions are inaccurate and that I do not have any personal bias against the neighbors nor against Grace Farms Foundation. In fact, to the contrary of assertions, I have now spent years trying to help achieve a positive coexistence between Grace Farms Foundation and its neighbors. Therefore, I am not recusing myself from this matter. I stick by all of that with the only difference being that I will now recuse myself. My reasoning is that it's on the basis that, given the ongoing adversarial history of this application. And ongoing FOIA hearings initiated by Holmes and Marquados. I've decided in, in, in discussion with council, not to create any additional issues in a potential appeal. By Marquados and, um, and Holmes, and I believe that this is the best action for me to take for the town. Um, I've asked Dick Ward to chair the rest of this application. Dick, thank you for stepping in and I apologize for, uh, for. Putting this on to you, but thank you. Um, I will go on mute and step away from the camera.
Okay, John, thank you. Uh, as I expressed, uh, last meeting, I. Also opposed, uh, John having to recuse himself, but I fully understand why he made that decision. Uh, it's late. I think at this point. We may make a few comments, but I don't see us taking a definitive, final decision tonight. As a preliminary comment, I would like to just note. That there are probably three separate. Issues, uh, that we need to consider. And I feel that we.
Wait, Mr. Ward, before you start, um, just so we seat everyone, because the, the public hearing is closed. Um, just so we know who's seated and John just left. So do you want to keep Mr. Cassavan seated as John has done for the rest of the meeting?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, Lynn. Yes, uh, Arthur, you will be seated, uh, for John.
And then you need to see someone for.
Thank you.
You need to see someone for Jean.
Uh, who, uh, Lynn was, who would be next on the list for seating?
You, you would see either, um, Mr. Herring or Mr. Bash. And, uh, I mean, Mr. Herring joined the commission in January and Mr. Bash joined in February. So it's.
Got it. I'm on board.
Okay.
And you attended the meeting last month, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
So you would have the background, because there was only one meeting that we've had so far on this issue. And I think everyone else was in attendance, so we don't need to go through that. But I think there are really three, probably separate issues. There may be a little bit of overlap between a couple of them, but. Uh, I think we will end up, uh, and I don't believe it's going to be tonight, uh, having to consider three separate motions. I would point out as a sort of a foundation for the, uh, requests by the applicant. Is that we look at the existing special permit. That goes back to, uh, twenty seventeen. That's the one where we had, was it a hundred conditions? But before the conditions, we had a series of findings. And in my opinion, in these kind of. Uh, issues. Findings are sort of fundamental because conditions then implement the findings. So the conditions are sort of secondary in the sense that you don't have a finding. And then have a condition that ignores or is contrary to the findings. So the conditions have to support the findings. And the findings are, are important. And I think there are two fundamental findings. That we have to look at as being foundational and as we go forward in looking at the requests from the applicant. Are we deviating from the finding or do we have to change a finding? The first finding that I think it was a, a foundational finding is the one on the. Involvement of for-profit entities. The second. Is parking. And as you all, uh, recall, that in the findings. It was found that, uh, and, and we had agreed that they could have up to two hundred and twenty-six parking spaces. And it's stated in finding number twelve, that parking is a key factor. In managing the level of activity at the site. We know that activity at the site is a critical issue for the neighbors. And that's why there's been, in part, why there's been. So much discussion and I would have to say confrontation, if not litigation, over the years. So with that sort of foundation, I guess I would open it up to, uh, fellow commissioners. Uh, to just discuss where we are. The three basic issues are the eighty-two Pudding Hill. Uh, house, which originally was identified to be a single-family home. The applicant wants to move, uh, some of the. Uh, the church staff, uh, over to that house as office space. Uh, not to make that facility, that house, uh, available to the public. But they also are talking about having, since they're going to do that or want to do that. That they would have, uh, new parking spaces created at that house. There's the parking issue. The, uh, neighbors are concerned that. Once space is freed up in the East Barn, and that's where the church staff. Uh, and administrators had been located, they will now be, uh, relocated if we approve this. To the Pudding House, house. Pudding Hill, I'm sorry, house. Uh, there's concern that, uh, the freed up space. Will sort of become new space for additional activities. Which will perhaps, uh, and it's their concern, intensify the use. Of Grace Farms. Second issue has to do with, uh, the for-profit entities. They want to be able to. And I'm sure that some of you commissioners will understand this better than I. But they feel that somehow they cannot have the involvement of for-profit entities. In some of their core issues. Uh, such as, uh. Uh, social justice and. Uh, things of that nature of the five core issues which they had, that, uh, they have identified. I'm not quite sure why. Employees, if not executives of for-profit corporations. Can't participate and be trained as individuals. In whatever core program the foundation wishes to have involvement from individuals from. Corporations. So that's a, a question. The third has to do with reporting. Uh, there's a fairly tight reporting requirement in our conditions. Uh, these requirements have created. Uh, some difficulty for, uh, the P and Z staff. Uh, and I think Lynn has, uh, expressed some concern that they may not really be. Providing as much useful information for the staff. Uh, and perhaps they can be changed or modified. But. And I think we need to sort of discuss that a little bit, that if. The neighbors are able to sort of see what the foundation is planning within some reasonable time period. And also see what the foundation has in fact done within some reasonable time period. That might be a reasonable, uh, sufficient information for the neighbors to. Be sure that the foundation is adhering to the conditions. So I open it up to whatever thoughts. You ladies and gentlemen might have. Dick, hi, it's Kent Turner. Um, there was one other issue that came up at the last discussion and that was, uh. Non-conformance of, uh, one of the conditions, which had to do with the landscaping. And, um, I think we need to address that also. Good point. Uh, yeah, they were going to look into that and I wonder, Lynn, do you have any update on? On that where the neighbors felt the foundation has failed to. Uh, adhere to or honor certain landscaping requirements. Yet the foundation seemed to say, hey, we're, we've done everything we're supposed to.
Um, P and Z staff went out there, uh, and we found that they had planted that area and it. Um, matched the plan. So, I mean, it, it's planted. It's, uh, and even some of the pictures that were submitted by, um, both parties actually support that. And show it graphically and then, and pictures, but, um, you know, the landscaping issue. Has been addressed essentially from P and Z's perspective, or at least staff's perspective.
All right, so you feel that there's sort of, say, reasonable compliance. In view of the season that we're in, which may make things look a little bare.
Yes.
Okay, all right, Ken, that. Answer your concern? That's, um, I guess that's, you know, the best we can do at this time and perhaps we revisit it when, uh, the foliage is out again. You know, confirm that in fact, things haven't died and, uh.
Mr. Turner, just to add, they, um. I mean, with respect to their Pudding Hill property, I mean, the commission could add, add additional foliage. And we can also go back and look at the, the existing landscaping for the other parcel. Um, but they were amenable to additional plantings in general. So should you see that as a need?
Yeah, Lynn, I think that's a very good idea. We could handle that with the condition. What are their comments on Pudding Hill?
I, I don't have any comments about Pudding Hill and I don't have any comments about changing the conditions from monthly to biannually. Is that what it is? Yeah. I do have a problem with the for-profit adding into the casual attendance. We spent months.
Yep.
Establishing, establishing like what. Events they could have and how many people they could have. And I just feel that they. And I just feel that they keep coming back and kind of pushing the envelope with this. And we're already dealing with the neighbors who are upset that there are too many people. And now they're asking to create events with for-profits, which to me doesn't sound like a small event. If you're going to do an event with a for-profit, it's going to be a significant event. So that that's my only concern with this application. Two out of three, I don't have a problem with, but the for-profit casual attendance events, I have.
I I totally agree with you. I think it's opening Pandora's box on the previous set of conditions that we established and rigorously went through and came to agreement on. And it's just going to lead to higher higher use and and intensification of use on that property that is not going to be beneficial for anyone.
I would, just as John Chris, I would agree with Commissioner Tuskorni and Commissioner Redman regarding the training issue and with for-profits. For reasons they have very well stated, I'm very cautious on that. I would comment on the Puddin Hill property as well as reporting. And reporting would be useful for me. I'm open to the idea of altering it. Now that we've had sort of a live test on on this. I would welcome a proposal from staff regarding what they think would be consistent with the spirit of the reporting issues. And to balance that with practicalities as well as their own time. And with such a recommendation, I think the commission, at least I, would be in a better position to make a final judgment on what changes, if any, would be appropriate. Regarding Puddin Hill, I understand the idea of wanting privacy. I worry that this is also has the virtue of generating more parking, which was a big issue for us. I'm still a little cautious on that. Also, I would note that if that building is going to be used on a daily basis, potentially. Since some, you know, spiritual and other counseling can happen on a very sudden on a very sudden way and at odd hours. That in effect, what's going to be happening is that there will be a hole in there, a potential hole in their security. And that that gate, which would be used to access the property would need to have a higher level of security than I think they suggested. So should the commission, in its wisdom, decide to sort of activate this house for this purpose as desired by the applicant, that there would be, it would be a key card gate that anyone who works there would have a key card, be able to get in, so it'd be monitored who's there and who's not. Also, there would be a camera, a scene camera and a face camera there, so that could be monitored similar to what the entryway is now, the main entrance. And that if you have a, let's say, a parishioner who's arriving for counseling or other other reasons, would need to be buzzed in by one of the, by one of the staff members there to ensure security. I think if we don't have that, again, you get a hole in the security and it's just sort of drive in. You know, anyone can drive in. And one of the concerns from neighbors and others has been ensuring that this is a secure compound, which I think the commission has been diligent in trying to ensure. So those would be my thoughts on that, should we allow this new use for this property? Those are my thoughts.
Apropos of what John just said, after reflection after last month's meeting, another thought came to my mind, which is I understand taking a dilapidated structure and making it office space. But if it's truly office space, it would generally be occupied from eight to six, don't, you know, or something like that. It dawned on me that there might be able to be a way to, and I understand their desire to have the the bathroom facility down there. But since people travel down there via golf cart or might get there another way, would it be possible to condition the use of that building without the creation of incremental parking? Because if this is really a generally an administrative office space, which actually might improve the area for nearby residents, considering what the building is now, why not just do it as a building without parking? I don't know.
Mr., yeah, I I tend to agree with you, Arthur. I I I was really concerned. You know, with the pudding, I don't mind the idea of it being a renovated building and the adjustment to it to an office space, although I did have some concerns about kind of the ADA accessibility bill building. But it sounded like they were working on that. I I was, I was kind of surprised at how seemingly aggressive some of the asks were in terms of removing all the constraints on the the event limitations that that Dan and Claire have raised. And then the other thing that kind of raised an eyebrow for me was when they they mentioned the parking at Puddin Hill, it seemed that, you know, they were, call it, you know, fifteen employees, I forget what the number was, but the parking spots were twenty-five, which which in my mind seemed like. And when I, I think someone asked that question, they said, well, we're just giving extra because we just want to be generous just in case. And to my mind, that just seemed a little flippant in terms of just considering how careful we the application had been with regard to the two hundred spaces down at the main building. It seemed like, well, I'm not sure that that kind of fits with with the rest of the logic. And with regard to the driveway, I was looking at the aerial. And it seems like the driveway to Pudding Hill is, you know, call it two-thirds of what the driveway would be from the back, Puddin Hill, back to the main entrance, main driveway core. So in theory, you could, you could, you know, close that current driveway and actually create a new access point from the main entry. So that would be a central access point. So instead of creating two security cameras per, per your comments, John, you could have a central control point and then have a secondary driveway that went over there. But I really like your point, Arthur, about just, you know, leveraging the parking below. I I'm concerned about the parking.
Any other comments?
It's Ken Turner. I agree, I think that's a great idea to get rid of that parking. But we do need to provide one or two handicap spots close to that facility.
The parking issue, you know, even if you cut any road in and and eliminate that old driveway that off of Luke's Wood, excuse me, off Puddin Hill. You know, it's transporting people there. So either they're being shuttled in a car. And that's assuming that they're mobile. If they aren't, I think Commissioner Turner is right. You know, there may be a need for at least some handicap parking there for people who need that. So there are a number of issues there. But I I I still think that the addition of a large number of parking spaces that they're contemplating at that Pudding Hill house is is really just an expansion of parking by another name. And, you know, it it has a, that 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 interesting sidebar virtue for them of expanding their their car capacity overall.
Do these employees park down below now? Or do they park in the east? I mean, is the East Barn down below? And that's where the parking is, and now they're getting moved up. So would they say, well, we need to have parking for the employees up there?
I think that's the case. I assume that right now, the the people, those church employees that work in the East Barn park at the East Barn.
Right. I I don't see them wanting the parking up there as another ploy. Hearing everyone talk about it, it's kind of opening my eyes a little bit to it. I I didn't think of that before. I didn't think they were going for a ploy to get extra parking. But I don't know, who knows? Like, they're asking for for-profit meetings and they they keep asking for more and more, don't they?
But if they're creating twenty-something parking spaces at the Pudding Hill house for employees and administrators, they're presumably freeing up.
They're opening up the parking.
A light number of spaces down below for expanded activity, which is something that the neighbors are concerned about.
True, true.
Well, perhaps you modify my earlier suggestion and you say, okay, how many people are actually going to work in that building? Assume each one drives a vehicle and then add two handicap spots, and that's the number you come up with.
What do you do with parking, the freed-up parking spaces? Do we close up some parking spaces?
That's what I objected to in the first place. But I mean, maybe at some point, there's a middle ground where we say, okay, they ask for twenty-five, we're going to give them ten. The neighbors won't be happy, but they'll be less unhappy, perhaps.
I've also seen a lot of parish houses around the world. And, you know, look at the ones for St. A's. You know, it's, it it's in a busy area and people see folks coming and going. They don't need to sort of put it off in the woods. So I'm I'm wondering, you know, what real need is there for such a privacy-laden structure in order to conduct their parish activities? Because I see a lot of other parish houses, they don't have it, and they seem to be doing just fine. So just saying.
Yeah, there's a large number of parking spaces as well, the increase.
And the other thing we could say is just no net change in parking. I mean, you have two hundred and twenty-six units or parking spaces, whatever the number is. And if you want to put twenty-five down there, fine, but you got to take twenty-five away from somewhere else.
Good idea.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
All right, it's awfully late. I mean, I don't think we want to keep setting a new record for the amount of time we're meeting. And maybe the next step, Lynn, you've heard comments. I think we have sort of kicked around all three issues a bit. Maybe there's enough room there for you to sort of come up with a, perhaps a draft motion with conditions where appropriate, based on the discussion. And obviously, someone, and I guess Lynn, it's you, perhaps in discussion with Ira or his people to sort of be sure that there are no unforeseen effects on other conditions. I mean, there are a hundred conditions and other findings, so that we come up with motions that make sense and will fit with the rest of this special permit.
I can do that for the next meeting. So just to clarify, if I've heard what you guys have said correctly, the parking concern is is the number of spaces that might be added, that the additional spaces that they would add at Pudding Hill. And potentially, looking at a condition that would allow use of the Pudding Hill property, but not move all the spaces there. Or would let them move the spaces, but remove spaces elsewhere on the property in order to maintain that the the total is going to be two hundred and twenty-six still. And then with respect to the for-profit use, if I've heard you all correctly, you're not comfortable with the that the addition of a for-profit use at the facility. And then with respect to the reporting, you guys are potentially comfortable with a change. And you would like staff's input as to what would be a valuable change to provide appropriate information over an appropriate time.
I think on Pudding Hill, I think there was also a question on screening of and maintenance equipment. And I believe that the foundation said, oh, yeah, it'll be screened, you won't be able to see it. And dumpsters screened and you won't be able to see it, so.
I was the one who brought that up, Mr. Ward. And they were going to put a berm in and it would be landscaped. And they were open with landscaping. And I volunteered to work with staff to come up with some appropriate landscaping. And the applicant said that's fine with them. So be happy to do that, assuming that the commission in its wisdom decides to approve this parking near the Puddin Hill house. Be happy to do that. But yes, that was, that was one of the open issues.
Well, is the parking and the storage of construction and maintenance equipment separate things? I mean, is parking is spaces for employees, but there must be a separate area for equipment?
As I remember, there is a outbuilding there, which is used for some equipment. And they're going to have to put a retaining wall in for part of it. And they're going to put a berm in to for screening. And so all that area will be needing some landscaping for, you know, to to hide the area that for screening. And so it was that landscaping I was referring to. I I also suggest that the security issues be addressed if the entrance from Puddin Hill is going to be active now beside, now it's an occasional use by, it's it's chained and bolted. And if maintenance needs to get there or security, they unlock it, they go in and they re-lock it. That's one thing, but this could be back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. To me, including by private vehicles, parishioners and so forth. To me, that means you have a key card gate and you have cameras and you have a log, just like they do at the main entrance, no difference.
I assume it's not available for the public. I mean, don't the public have to go through the main entrance?
True, but if you're, let's say, a parishioner and you're there for some kind of counseling, you would drive in, park and go in. And so that wouldn't be public. But in other words, they want to ensure that, you know, they know who's, how many people are on on campus and when they come and when they go. And so whether they enter through the main campus now, which is what happens for these activities, or enter through Puddin Hill, we treat it the same way. That that's my point.
I thought, going back to the idea of the the for-profit, I thought there was one point where they said they they wanted an unlimited amount of casual attendance events. And I I feel like that, I maybe I'm confusing the two. But I thought that was what, Dan, you had raised an issue with in terms of the limits.
Well, Chris, as I understand it, right now, for events under two hundred, it's unlimited. Is that correct, Lynn?
That's true, that's true.
Yes, that is true. It's spelled out in condition number sixteen is the activity chart.
That created, I think, a problem with some of us that if there were for-profit entities available to hold events under two hundred, it would be within the unlimited category.
Okay, got it. So it's just the definition of unlimited. Basically incorporating those elements, got it.
About the for-profit, I mean, that's
Okay. Thank you, I misunderstood.
Lynn, do you think you have enough to go on to come up with some perhaps suggested motions and conditions for consideration next meeting?
I think I have a good starting point and I can come back with some conditions. Or, and you guys can feel free to edit them or give other direction if you rethought it or not. I mean, considering the hour is really late and everyone probably isn't thinking so, you know, like this isn't. It's not like it was a first item on the agenda tonight, so.
I think I'm thinking better than I normally do.
Well, I think are invited to offer comments to to Lynn.
Yeah, so if anyone has comments, you should reach out to me. Maybe I'm just the one who's not thinking clearly because the hour is late, so.
I think we can move on. And perhaps we can call back our permanent chairman. And wrap this whole thing up, Mr. Chairman.
I think we ought to. Okay, real quick, planning subcommittee update. Krista just spent thirty seconds summarizing what we talked about tonight because it's it's important stuff.
So our our meeting tonight continued a conversation about affordable housing with a specific focus on inclusionary zoning. And we talked through some of the main questions that would need to be answered to create a And we talked through some of the main questions that would need to be answered to create a framework for New Canaan. And I'm going to send out to the subcommittee, I'm not, Lynn will send out to the subcommittee members two options for how we move forward, and we're looking for feedback for the April meeting.
And thank you, Krista. And Lynn, I would, or Krista, I would suggest, Lynn, you send it to everybody. It's, it's good stuff. Lynn, do you have anything, admin?
No.
Okay, great. Twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, anybody have any issues with the minutes? Okay, have a motion for approval?
I'll sell move.
Okay, Art, and I saw Claire second. Okay, so we don't, do we have to do a roll call or not, Lynn?
I, I would, yeah.
Okay, it's Lynn's fault. I vote yes. Art, you're seated for Gene.
Yes.
John Chris.
Yes.
Mr. Nielsen.
Yes.
Dan Radman.
Yes.
Eric Tuskornia. Kent Turner.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Okay, is anybody going to be on the six eighteen train to New York City with me tomorrow morning?
Welcome to James and Chris, your first five and a half hour meeting.
I was told every meeting is like this, no?
I have, I have five fifty on my, my Zoom here, so five hours and fifty minutes.
Oh, okay.
It's why we get the big money. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.